Good evening, town of Wakefield. Today is the town council meeting for January 28th, 2019. Tonight, if we could have Josh come up, Josh Polachek, for the pledge of allegiance and...
And Spencer.
And Spencer, I'm sorry. Spencer, sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, for tonight, it looks like we have one person for public participation. We have Jasmine Zavotley. Bodley, close. Come on up. Welcome. So you have three minutes, and we won't interact with your conversation. We'll take notes and deem what's fit later. But thank you very much for coming, and tell us what's on your mind.
I understand that there is a discussion on a potential sustainability committee tonight, and as a high schooler and a member of Sustainable Wakefield, I don't want to grow up in an earth that is ravaged by human negligence, so I see the importance in creating a more sustainable present to ensure a brighter future. And I see the importance of local action to create national change. This is why I have interest in making Wakefield more sustainable. I think there are many things the town can improve on, such as making it easier to invest in rooftop solar, making recycling more available, and providing compost services. I hope that the town council will vote favorably for setting up a committee dedicated to improving town's sustainability, and I would like the town to consider having youth participation on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ryan, is that mic on? Okay, all right. Okay, next, for presentation action items, we have fiscal year 2020 budgets, my favorite time of year. Do we have Kevin? Kevin Gill? If you could step forward and make yourself at home. So the first budget, number four treasurer.
Yes.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council members. First budget tonight is the town treasurer's budget. We have John McCarthy here. John is our town treasurer. Jump right in. The town treasurer's budget, we are recommending a budget increase in fiscal 2020 of $7,104. This increase is all in personal services and is contractual in negotiated increases. The main expenses within this budget, $13,000 for tax title, which is used for attorney's fees and land court costs, and as a line item, $7,500 for bank charges, which is the cost to maintain the town's bank accounts and the cost of checks. John's office does collect revenue for tax title. In fiscal 2018, he collected over $207,000, and fiscal year-to-date, he's collected over $106,000. The total budget request for the treasurer's office for fiscal '20 is $212,553.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none?
I do gotta say, Mr. Chairman, that John is part of our finance team. John, and we have Victor here as well tonight, assessor's office, and Kathy Kelly and the tax collectors, and these people are a reason why, a real big reason why we have a AAA bond rating, because of the work that they do along with Kevin, so I want to thank you all three, all who got you here right now. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars you're saving us every year. Yeah.
Were you expecting your grilled?
Mr. May was very generous in his comments.
He's honest.
What was the budget coming out of that?
That was number four?
$212, $212 and $53.
$553.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a number two, is actually number seven, tax collector.
Next budget is the tax collector's budget. We have Kathy Kelly. Kathy is our town's tax collector.
Welcome, Kathy.
Tremendous job for us, collecting with a smile. The budget increase for fiscal 2020, we're recommending an increase of $15,895. This breaks down to $8,438 to the tax levy and $7,457 to the water and sewer enterprise accounts. This increase is in personal services and is contractual in the amount of $10,025. And we also increased the overtime line item by $5,000. This is to be used as needed during busy times in the season. When the commitments and the tax bills go out, usually we get a big rush on the due dates, and so we get those four times a year. We also have the excise bills that we send out, water and sewer bills, so there is plenty of foot traffic during those peak times, so we saw the need to increase the overtime line item. Under contractual services, we increased the postage line item, $2,120. This is due to a rate increase. And we decreased the professional services line item, $1,250, and that was based on current and prior year usage. The main expenses within this budget, $5,200 for printing and binding, which is used to print the preliminary and actual tax bills, $3,750 in the professional services line item, which is used during the tax title process if needed, and the main expense is $32,500 for postage, which is used to mail the tax bills. The total request for fiscal '20 is $273,986, with $220,096 coming from tax levy and $53,890 coming from a water and sewer transfer.
And will we accept the tax collector's budget of $273,986?
Questions?
Quick question. Could you just explain the telephone expenditure of $950, appropriation of $950? Just curious.
It's a historical charge that, based on prior year usage, that is distributed townwide, so we get a monthly bill, and we break it out, but we only charge it once a year to the particular line items.
Is it too low?
You do a great job for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. My staff does as well. Debbie Rewine and Darby Holman.
Hey, did you have questions?
Just a couple of questions.
Good evening. One of them related to the collection rate. How are we doing as a town? Where are we at and how is it compared?
Good question asked. We're doing fabulous. My collection rate probably couldn't get any better.
It's just under 100%. I think it was, what, last year, I had one in tax title. Of the 9,600 properties that we had, there was, I think I had one. This year, I'm hoping for none.
And to what do you attribute that? I imagine that rate is probably higher than some other communities.
Yes, yes.
So what do you think it is that distinguishes?
I think it's every day we do our job. We collect, we follow up. I think for those people who do not, who are on my delinquent list, we send them, I call them love letters, but, and, you know, we send them around the holidays, too, so we'll see them, but they come in. The people are wonderful. They thank us for giving them the amount of time that we give them, and we don't want to take their property, we just want the money. So I think it's important that we have a steady revenue stream. We're sending out $23,000 excise bills, February 4th, that will be your Valentine from us, so we try to hit all the holidays. But that's difficult for us because we have, the due date for real estate and personal property is, the due date, oh, February 1st, so, but then we're exhausted. We breathe a little, and, you know, they're issued on the 4th, and hopefully they won't get them until probably February 6th, so we have one day when we can really just, phew. But at the same time, we have water and sewer bills that we have to collect for, so it's extremely busy. So I would attribute it to the competence of the collector and her staff.
And the other piece, too, I know, Kevin, you mentioned postage is increasing, obviously. What can we do as a town to still stay in our lane, but to try to streamline that so that we don't run afoul, you know, of any regulations relative to that, but to try to have more things electronically, you know, email, et cetera, versus, you know, the hard copy?
That's a good question. Emailing bills is not something that we will be doing now, and I think there's the misconception where people think that if you email it, you're saving money, but we wouldn't do the emailing. We would have to have that by one of the companies who do that, so there would be a charge for that. So what we do now is we do get the bulk rate. We don't mail things to people. We tell them they have to come in and pick them up. We monitor it, we are very stingy with the postage, and even though the postage effective the 27th went up from, what, 50 cents to 55 cents, we get the bulk rate wherever we can, and I, yeah, so we try to control it, but it's an expense. If you want to spend $32,500 and get 75 million, I don't think it's a bad payoff, so.
Okay, any other questions? Paul, may we, no questions down here? Okay, so all in favor of passing the tax collector budget?
Aye, thank you, thank you. And you'll be getting your excise bills.
Hearing none? That was a seven zero, none opposed. Okay, Kevin, if you can take us into number three, which is actually number eight, assessor.
Next budget is the assessor's budget. We have Victor Santanello, the director of assessing.
Welcome, Victor.
Hello.
The assessor's budget, we're recommending an increase of $9,231. This increase is all in personal services and is contractual in negotiated increases. Main expenses within this budget, professional services line item, $22,000, which is used for outside appraisal services, outside personal property services, and expert witnesses as needed for ATB cases. We also have a postage line item, $2,000, which is used to notify taxpayers for inspections and any correspondence with attorneys with regards to ATB cases. Total budget request is $236,744.
And will we accept the budget of $236,000?
$744.
$744.
Questions, comments from town council?
Steve, is there anything that we can do? I know this is a relationship we have with Redding, I believe, right? So is there anything we can do to try to shift more of the burden onto Redding?
Why don't you ask what you really mean?
Yes. We also shift the other expenses to one that's...
Yes, health insurance.
That doesn't show up, it'll show up in another budget, so, health insurance, anything else that is included. In Victor's package.
So I guess like net-net, you know, of that, how close to that 50% are we paying? Are we paying 49, 51?
We're actually paying a little bit less than 50, I would say.
Is there anything more that we can do to drive that down?
We can always try.
But how do we negotiate with, is that something we do on an annual basis with Redding?
Yeah, we sit down on an annual basis. We try to keep this around a 50%, because that's really a true rendition of what's happening, but I'm in constant conversation with Barbara Lasher. They actually will pay a little bit more than the 50% because we're so much easier to deal with than the arm of Redding, so.
Well, I mean, I think there's a premium for that. We have a good system in place, though, too, so for them, it's a cost savings, but I think...
Well, I think at this point, Victor's kind of got them well-heeled, too, after a few years, but we're constantly looking to cost shift more, so I appreciate it, yeah.
Victor, the time is actually split pretty evenly, right? I mean, you're, that's how you do it, like an hourly basis, you clock in, clock out, kind of?
They have a clock from there. Just punch it right in, put the ticket back.
But I mean, pretty much services rendered are probably 50, 50-ish. I mean, it's pretty close.
Some weeks, it seems like it's 90, 10, but in the end, it all works out.
Okay, so, okay, any other questions, comments for Victor? I know he's been saving up answers all week. Okay, all in favor of passing the number eight assessor line, three? All in favor is seven zero.
Thank you, folks. You're a classic.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, Kevin, can you take us to number four, which is actually number nine on the chart?
Next budget is the town, actually, the next two budgets for the town clerk. Town clerk's budget and the election and registration budget. We have Betsy Sherman here tonight.
Betsy, welcome.
Back home again, isn't she?
Yeah, you want to sit up here? Actually, please, you're really...
I'd love to, actually, at times.
We'll get into that after hours, right?
I meant that as a compliment to everyone.
Oh, glad to see you back, Betsy.
The town clerk's budget, we're recommending an increase for fiscal 2020 of $10,929. This increase is all in personal services and is for contractual and negotiated increases. Main expenses within this budget, there's a repair and maintenance line item, $4,000, which is used for the office copy machine and other office equipment as needed. There's a printing and binding line item, $10,000, which is used to print the town's bylaws, code books, dog licenses, and is also used to bind the old books for birth, death, and marriage certificates. The total budget request for 2020 is $215,462.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the town clerk budget for the amount of
Questions, comments? Julie?
I have a question, less about the budget and more about process. So all the binding, and I've seen all the work that goes on in there, is there a backup to that? I mean, we had the fire right next door. What happens in the case of...
The vault is pretty safe.
Okay, so there's a vault.
Oh, is there ever? There's a vault, and all of the vital materials are in there.
Okay.
All of the original birth certificates, going back to the 1800s, right up until the present day, all of the town reports. Now, it costs almost $300 per binding to have those books done, and we have to have four or five of them done every year. We must have them done.
Yeah.
I feel very secure about the vault, to be honest with you. We took in some water recently, and thankfully, not a drop cut in there. And I can't take anything out of there because there's no other more secure place to keep it, but everything, you know, it's safe there.
Yeah, the recent fire just made me think of it.
Oh, across the street?
Right, across the street.
Yeah, no. If the place goes up...
Who are you taking with you in the vault?
I'm out of there. I'm so out of there. Down the one-way street.
Didn't someone get locked up in there recently?
I beg your pardon?
Didn't someone get locked in there?
I did. They let me out. That was two years ago, Paul, okay? You're living in the past. No, knock it off. Yeah, no, I just waited them, I waited them out.
Okay, any other questions? Paul, you already had one, so duly noted.
Betsy, thank you for the service that you do. Questions? When you first took office, you and I had a discussion about the business certificates.
Yes.
Have you seen an increase in the amount of business certificates that we've recaptured
Right.
since that time?
Right, I'll tell you what I've done since I became town clerk. First of all, I went to Victor, and I got a list of all of the businesses in town. Now, some of them are exempt by law, and I sent a letter out to all of them. And then what I do, they're good for four years. It's $50 for four years, you know, it comes down to a dollar and a quarter a month, actually, so it's not a big business expense. And I have them lined up. If you come in the office tomorrow, you'll see them. For the entire, this coming year, I have all of the ones that expired, or are due to expire. So two months before they're due to expire, I send out letters to the people reminding them. Now, we probably get back between 80 and 90% of them. Some businesses, unfortunately, have either not made it or have chosen to leave, or they've retired, whatever. But by the same token, we get new ones. So we have about the same number every year, give or take, and they're very good about it, coming in, and we have the option, which we've had for a couple of years now, that they can put it on their corporate charge, because we have the Visa, you know, debit card, debit credit card. So those are working out very well.
So what would you say would be the increase from initiation to now?
Not a whole heck of a lot, because we have some that we lose, okay? We lose some.
On a government financial, I'm talking about if I was capturing.
No, I know what you're saying. Financially, it's not a big deal, all right? But for those that we lose, we lose maybe 15 to 20% of them, and we do over 200 a year, okay? Now, we're on number 19, no, we're not on 19, we're on number 13 this year. So I've gotten all the January people in. The February people that would expire have already gotten. I'll probably get, let's say, 30 go out. I may get 26 back.
Okay.
But out of the four that I don't get back, I may pick up two.
Correct.
And there are certain times, it's almost cyclical, when people will open a business, you know, the time of year.
Correct.
Depending upon the type of business it is, what they can negotiate for a rental, you know, rental space here in town. I have a lot of people now that are doing, signing up, they have businesses out of their homes, but the first thing I do before I even take their money or anything else is, I make sure that they're zoned for business.
Right.
So I'll give Gail Conroy a call and, you know, just make sure, because I don't want these people unwittingly to get themselves in a jam, and that could happen very easily, you know? So I do follow up on the ones that are doing business out of their home. And a lot more are doing it because of the internet, by the way.
True. Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
May I make a comment before you dismiss me?
Yes, please, please.
I'll use this venue, I'm trying every one I possibly can. The census forms are out. I urge people to return them. It takes about two minutes to fill it out. Either mail it back, drop it off to us, I don't care. We need them back, because if they do not complete their census forms for two consecutive years, the state, not I, makes them inactive voters, and they are not notified by the state, all right? So when they come to vote in the April 23rd election, some of them, if they didn't return it last year and don't return it this year, they're inactive. That means that if they want to vote, they have to fill out a form. We live in a very impatient world. People don't want to wait in line, they don't want to take any time to do anything extra. It's in and it's out. I urge people to send them, because if they didn't send them last year, now, we're working might and may, and we've probably gotten, received 2,000 back out of the 14,000 that went out, and we're getting them into the computer as fast as we can, so that the people will not be made inactive. It doesn't mean you're not a registered voter, it just means you're inactive. That's a state law, not my doing. Would be a lot easier to just let them vote. Secondly, and it's there in writing, but people cannot register to vote on the census. They just can't. They cannot change their registration, nor can they register to vote, nor can they register to vote at the post office. Change their address, they've either got to register to vote or change their affiliation online, or come in. We can do it in two seconds and change them in the computer. That's all, I just want to get that out there. The census is so important. It's very, very important for the voter, for the resident. That's who it's important for, so I can't stress that enough. I put it in the newspaper, you know, in the item, which is the newspaper of record. We put it online, we do everything that we possibly can, but people are busy. Sometimes they just don't take the time, and they don't, it gets put in a pile. The ones that are coming in the quickest are the people that own dogs.
Right.
They come in. I just wanted to use this opportunity to speak about the census. It's very, very important.
No, it's critical. So two times in a row, two years in a row, and you're not voting.
Two years in a row, you're out. You're out the door. From the state will just know you're out.
Right, okay, no, it's duly noted. People don't pay attention, they won't be voting on the 23rd.
It's more important than they think it is.
Right. Okay.
That's it, thank you for your time. Just when you think it's safe, what now?
Halfway. Yeah, so if we can go on to the election and registration?
The election and registration budget, we are recommending level funding. Main expenses within this budget, personal services, $20,900, which is used for census workers and early voting staffing. Under contractual services, there's a professional services line item, $10,000. We use a company called LHS. They help with the census mailing, the printing of the ballots, and also maintenance for the town's voting machines. Postage line item, $6,000, which is used for absentee ballots. Total budget request is $41,000.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the elections and registration budget of, oh, just moved off that page, $41,000.
Questions, comments?
Betsy, none of the elections in this next year's fiscal budget will have early voting, right?
No, I already called...
We don't have it in April, we won't have it in...
There were no other elections in 19, and the odd is, there's only the one, unless there's a special. But, and you can have a budget for that, you just don't know.
Yeah.
I call the state. I love early voting. I absolutely love it. I love it for the people that come in, I love it for our office, it's great, but in a town election, you cannot have it. I have made the call, I made the call about a month ago, you know, hoping. So no, no early voting. There'll probably be early voting in 2020. I'm hoping it will be for the, we have five elections in 2020. So presidential preference is March 3rd. I'm hoping there'll be early voting then. We'll have the town election, we will have the, we only have four right now, let me leave it at four. We'll have the primary in September, which the state has not set yet. They have not set the date yet, and then we'll have the presidential election in November. And we did one, we did 6,500 early voters in the last, in the presidential election of '16, for the first time in Massachusetts. By doing early voting, the town received, the first time, $1,500. Nobody in my office gets any money for it. They get overtime, obviously, because we're there night and day, but by staying open extra hours, the state will give us money. And this year, I got the maximum. I haven't seen it, and I know I never will, but it goes into the general fund, and we get money for being open. We were open Saturday from 9:00 in the morning till 3:00 in the afternoon, and Sunday from 11:00 until 2:00, as well as the five days previous and the five days after that weekend. So I love it. It's, but we won't have it for any town election.
Right, we won't have it for the town election. This budget, though, goes till June of 2020, so the March election, potentially, we could have early voting, right?
Oh, yeah, any state election, a federal can, March of 2020, but no town election can regardless.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'm just hoping the legislators vote for the early voting. You know, it has to pass, you know, their muster, and I love it. I hope we have it for the March election, I hope we have it for September, and I hope we have it for November, quite honestly. And we'll take, we'll probably take a third of the people right out of the mix. And we line them up, the people at town hall know, they were lined out the door.
Yeah, and I just want to thank you, your staff did great, and not all towns were open on the weekends.
That's right.
It's something that you chose to do, so thank you for that, and also, I early voted the day after the fire, and you, 8 o'clock, you guys were open, so thank you for that.
We're up and running. I can't compliment my staff enough. Rosemary Morgan and Denise Oats, they're wonderful, we're a team, there's, we do every, there's nothing that we all can't do and don't do if there's, you know, that has to be done, so it's a wonderful mix. We're, we get along very, very well. They're very nice people to work with, and I'm sure they'd say the same about me. It's the way it goes, but, you know, I love the, I love the early voting. What can I say? I love it, I wish we could have it.
Any other comments, questions? Yeah, so the synergy is great at the town clerk's office, it really is. You can feel it coming in.
It's fun. Also, the town's people should be aware that the drop dead date is April 9th, that we will be notifying, by law, we have to do it, every household that has at least one registered voter because of the changes in the charter, which Tony Mullen, Attorney Mullen, will be writing up, they have to be notified. The drop dead date is April 9th, but there's no date too early, but timing is everything in life, and I don't want it to arrive with tax, you know, the tax... And I don't want it to arrive with tax, you know, the tax bill's February first, that's too early. But we'll probably hit them the third week in March, after the excise taxes are out. And probably two percent of the people will read it. And I'm very realistic about the whole thing. But we'll be covered by law. My biggest thing is that I'm hoping, in the font that people can read, that we will have the ballot as a back-to-back one and not have to go into two ballots. That's what I'm really hoping for. Because that will be confusing, and unfortunately, a lot of people may say, I don't care about the second one. It's all the charter changes. You know, I, I'm hoping we can cram everything right onto the ballots back-to-back. And save on printing and a lot of other things.
Betsy, you're not asking me to be concise, are you?
I thought it was a nice way of doing it. And, you know, I just thought I'd drop it right here with witnesses. But, I mean, I think that, you know what, we've talked about it, you know? So that's the one thing that's kind of looming over us, or over me in my mind. I just, I want to make it as easy as I can for the people. So all your charter changes, if they're coming in the mail, be sure to read them.
We know all about those.
What?
We're all set.
I, I figured you would be.
Okay, I want to go back, though, and to vote on number nine, Town Clerk Budget, just to be sure. All in favor of the Town Clerk Budget number nine?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so seven-zero, we're approving that. And also approving number ten now, all in favor for election and registration. All opposed? Any nuns? So seven-zero.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that was, thank you very much.
Oh, no, thank you.
Being open two days, which we didn't have to, was quite a service to the, to the taxpayer and the people. And that's what Betsy does with her office and your group, so. Thank you so much for your good work.
A-plus, Betsy. Thanks very much. Kevin, you can't go.
Not yet.
Thank you, Betsy. Okay, so Board of Health.
Next budget is the Board of Health budget.
Number twenty-six.
We have Ruth Clay here, the town's health agent. We also have members of our staff here, and members of the board. For fiscal 2020, we're requesting an increase of fifteen thousand six hundred and one dollars. This increase breaks down, under personal services, the increase is two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, which is a contractual and negotiated increase. Under contractual services, the increase is twelve thousand twenty dollars. There's an increase in the advertising line item, which is used to advertise legal notices. And under the professional services line item, there was an increase of eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. This increase is the cost for the town to be in a municipal agreement with the town of Melrose. This agreement with Melrose, it used to be a, three towns used to be in, in the agreement. Reading dropped out several years ago. Worked with Melrose, so we phased in the amount of increase in services that we would pick up over three years. That's why that increase was a little bit larger. This is year three of that increase, so this will be the final big jump in that line item. Other mosquito control line item, there was a small increase, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. The total budget request for fiscal 2020 is two hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars.
Will we accept the Board of Health budget for two hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and eighteen?
Second.
Second.
Okay, questions, comments? Amy?
And go. Did you hear me, Andi? I, um, no, you go first. I, so thank you for coming. I, I love the work that you guys do. I don't always hear about it. And so I had, had told Steve through Steve, just to ask for you guys to just to tell us about some of the work you're doing in town, primarily around opiates. So I, I see some other people back there. But also, I know there's been work, some work done on all the vaping stores and the tobacco licenses. And so I thought we could use this opportunity just to hear about some of the work that you guys do. Because you guys are working to make our community improve our public health, and I'd love to hear about that.
Sure. So the vaping, I'll do that first, it's easier, more straightforward. So we have, the Board of Health has passed, over time, a number of updates to the tobacco regulations. So our regulations are pretty much state-of-the-art, with the exception of there are a few communities who are prohibiting menthol and mint flavors. Board hasn't really taken that up yet, because we're waiting for the other towns to be sued and let that go. Well, they will be, and it'll go through the court system, and then if the courts uphold it, we'll move forward. But there's really no reason to move on that right now. We do have a cap on the number of tobacco permits that are allowed in the town. Wakefield does have unusually large number of permits, considering the size of the community. We have, well, technically, we have twenty-nine. As a space becomes for a different use, then that license, that permit is permanently retired, so that we can never expand. One of our spaces that was at Rooster Thai is being transformed into a pizza place that won't be selling tobacco, so that permit will be permanently retired. So we will be having less and less over time. We do have five, what we call retail tobacco stores. Again, unusual for our size community, three of them are vaping stores. We do have, we have a regional grant, a ten-year regional grant. We're in year one. And so Maureen Busby, who I think you all know at this point, does periodic compliance checks, including targeted compliance checks for places that we get complaints, or that the police get complaints about. So Maureen actually did some targeted compliance checks, and two failed. They'll both have hearings this Wednesday night. This is a big Wednesday meeting week for us. So one of them actually will be having a hearing for a thirty-day suspension, because they had four violations at that one compliance check. And the other one will be facing a seven-day suspension, because it was their second violation.
And just to clarify, just so people understand, and I understand, a violation means they were selling to people under twenty-one?
Um, it could. We have, there's a lot of different parts to our regulation. I think it's up to, like, section M or something. So the one that has the four violations did sell to somebody under twenty-one. They sold them a flavored product. They're not allowed to have flavored products. They had products on the counter, which customers could get to, which they're not allowed. And the fourth one was, yeah, yeah, I know. The, there was a multi-pack of cigars. We have minimum pricing for cigars, and that was also too cheap. So we stacked the violations, and Attorney Mullen will be joining us Wednesday night. We've, we have had a couple of seven-day suspensions. This is our first thirty-day suspension, so.
And, and then, I, I like the idea of if spaces got a different use, then our cap won't increase. But, so Melrose has ten.
Twelve.
Twelve. And Reading and Stonem are also less than that? So is there any way, is there anything we can do to get that number, I mean, to have, you know,
It's very interesting.
over double, two and a half times what Melrose and our neighbors have? It's a little disconcerting, especially when it's getting into the hands of people that are underaged.
Well, as you know, I'm the health director for Melrose and Wakefield, and it's very interesting. The communities are very similar, if you look at them on paper. But in, in our work, and I have no, I have no explanation, but there are some different dynamics. That's one of them. Another one that was different between Melrose and Wakefield is when marijuana became legal, a lot of the Wakefield convenience stores started selling products, pipes and all that. And in, in places, two of them specifically right across from elementary schools, we had a lot of concerns about that. We had a lot of concerns from parents about that. The Board of Health revised their regulations, so that, that, that product now can only be sold in stores that you have to be twenty-one and over to enter. Melrose didn't have that at all. I, I, I just, I can't explain it. It's just some different dynamics going on. The, the numbers will come down. It's really, you know, supply and demand. I, I doubt that all three vape stores that are all on Albion Street will all stay in business over time. You know, I just don't think there's that much demand. But, you know, that's, that's economics.
Amy, you all set?
Yeah.
Okay, Tony, I'm sorry.
Just really quickly.
Oh, yeah, sure.
A quiet service that you do, and, and having been on the board for several years, I know, is E-Mark. And I think a lot of people don't appreciate that the Board of Health has such a close connection with E-Mark, and how they serve as some of our most vulnerable citizens, so.
So we actually have two different line items. One is for E-Mark, which isn't called E-Mark anymore. But I can't remember its new name. It's called something different. But anyway, it is E-Mark. And that's a regional nonprofit organization that provides services to developmentally disabled adults. And that includes residential homes, it includes job training. So there's, there's a number of different services, and also some recreational programming specifically. That line item is pretty minimal, quite frankly. And it's stayed the same for probably twenty years. But it's something. And then the other one we have is with Riverside Community Care, which is another regional nonprofit, which provides outpatient mental health services, which is also really, again, level-funded for many, many years. And I believe we had both of them come to the town council, I can't remember how many years ago, Yeah. and gave a brief presentation to the town council for its selectmen at the time, to give a brief explanation about the services they provide. Yeah. And we also have the other contract with Interface, which is an eight-hundred helpline that's available Monday through Friday. If somebody calls and is looking for mental health services, and give them their particulars, like how old the person is, what kind the issue is, what kind of insurance they have, they will get back to them with a couple of names of resources, which is huge, because once you identify that there's an issue, finding a provider is really next to impossible and hugely time-consuming. Also for our, our staff at the school department, who identify students that have those issues, and they certainly don't have the time to do all the legwork to find that.
That's great.
Yeah, I would just add, and Interface has, has been invaluable, and we all sort of need to remind ourselves that we have it. I've, I've spoken to a few folks in town who have discussed just their challenges with the latest therapists, maybe, you know. I've seen pediatricians have a, have a couple of people they always use to find out that they no longer accept. So the Interface system, you know, I wish it was statewide. You know, I've had people from other towns ask if they could use it, you know, to really, you know. I don't know how many municipalities they serve.
It's about sixty.
But, yeah, but the, the compassion on the phone, the professionalism is remarkable in this day and age, where it's just so difficult to navigate the system. So we're, we're great.
I just want to throw in one other thing, since one of you brought it up earlier about postage. We do all of our permitting online now. We switched a few years ago. It has saved huge amounts of money for our postage line item, and also huge amounts of time. So people can go online to the website, they can fill out their forms online, they can pay online. It's really streamless and much easier on everybody.
Thank you.
Tony?
More of a statement than a question. I'm a frequent participant in the Wake Up Committee meetings on Tuesday mornings with Catherine back there, Heidi and Maureen. Thank you for the hard work you do. I want to recognize that as well. But it was brought up at the last meeting that the underage students were going into these vape shops with like a code word to the owners. And that the owners, okay, it's safe to sell to this person. That's how they were kind of getting around some of the processes and selling to underage kids.
And they also go to our neighboring communities. And they, the people who work there kind of get to know who their customers are. So it's, that's not a new issue. That's been going on since we started doing compliance checks thirty years ago. It's just kind of a whack-a-mole thing that keeps happening as they keep changing their products.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Just two things. One of them, I, I'm interested in the mental health piece and understanding, do we have stats to know what sort of reach we have, and how that reach has changed in recent years?
I did not. Bring those with me, but, yes. You don't have your Interface numbers, do you?
No.
But they're up.
Yeah, we.
We, what's been nice, too, is that primarily, for the first two years, we were serving the school-age population that's gone into our middle age and even elder population significantly. So I think the numbers are up about sixty percent since last year.
I guess that's part of my concern, and I raise it to, with accounts on aging, making sure that our budgeting is in line with the need. And if there is a sixty percent increase, and I think there should be some recognition of that when we are budgeting. And you, you mentioned it's basically level funding, and that has been.
We don't get charged by the person. We have a flat contract with them. It's twelve thousand five hundred, and we pay half, and the school department pays half. Our numbers are actually pretty much in line with our neighbors. We, we all kind of sent our numbers around to each other within the last year, just to see where we were. And they are actually comparable. It still is majority school age. But we're really working hard in all the communities to make sure everybody understands that the service is not just for youth, it's for people of all ages, including middle age, older age, preschoolers, we've been getting. It's for everybody, so we're, we're looking for some more. We have a new communications person here with the town, so we're really looking to take advantage of her expertise to be able to get the word out in some all different kinds. Because we're, as you heard Laurel say, we're huge fans of this service. It's just, have heard nothing but hugely positive reports from anybody who's used it. And access for healthcare is really one of the number-one issues. So we want to shout from the rooftops about the service, so.
I guess in looking at that, I mean, I, I was focused specifically on the Riverside Community Care, which is the mental, mental, the outpatient.
Well, they're both mental health.
Right, right. And, but that's, that's been leveled at sixty-four hundred.
Forever.
But have you found that that demand has increased specifically?
Um, yes.
I would imagine that they're kind of part and parcel, right? If, if the hotline is up, then I would imagine that the demand at Riverside is probably up as well, so.
We have the numbers, because I have them over time, and it's part of our annual report. It's not broken down in the annual report, although that's certainly something we can, we can get. We get annually, we get how many people use Riverside, and how many visits total, and how much free care, because they work on a sliding scale. So some of it is free care, and some of it is reduced-cost care.
So I guess maybe that's something just in budgeting for next year, being, being cognizant of that? Because any time that we can make sure that we're right-sizing a budget for the need, and sometimes needs go down, so a contraction makes sense.
That need's not going down.
No, I know. And in your case, if the need is going up, then we should make sure that, you know, we're, we're keeping it aligned.
Yeah, we can, I can certainly get that information for you.
And the other question I had was related to some of these, I guess, these massage, foot massage, massage parlour, you know?
You're just hitting all our favorite spots today.
Can you give us, I, I know, obviously, there's, there's a, there's a police component to that, too. But can you give us a sense of what you're able to do from a regulation standpoint, or?
Sure. Actually, I was just at a meeting this week with the, sorry, you want to talk?
No. Tom could speak to the last meeting.
Oh, well, I actually just had a meeting with Representative Broder, Senator Lewis, Marion Ryan, and Chief Smith at the State House this very week. You following me around? To bring up actually a number of issues. As you said, some of it is enforcement, and some of it's not enforcement. The state regulates massage, but doesn't regulate body work. Some communities, like Wakefield, does have, do have local regulations for body work, Wakefield being one of them, at the urging of our police department. We did use those regulations and worked with the police department. We did use those regulations and worked with the police department, who did undercover operations at the two that we had at the time. Both of them were offering other services besides body work. We shut both of them down. One has stayed down, the other one did the usual, they just reopened with a massage license. So we talked about a couple of issues with the state. One is this dichotomy about a number of body workplaces that get closed down, reopen under massage. We talked about the whole process of getting a massage license from the state, the resources the state have, which is almost nothing. They have one investigator for the entire state. And then the enforcement and human trafficking side of it, which we talked extensively with the chief and Marion Ryan about, obviously. So there's a lot of different components. And at this point, we have two body work. One licensed, one we're working on getting licensed.
So we do feel, you know, I mean, the Board of Health's been an incredible education in just municipal cooperation. So, you know, all, all of the parties, you know, we all see each other at Wake Up meetings. But, but, you know, Chief and I did a presentation at a church years ago just to talk about, you know, how much can you regulate yourself out of this? So the premise being that if we had some local control, we would actually, you know, certainly send the message. Because we also want to give legitimate care to people who are doing legitimate, legitimate practice. And it's, it's been interesting because a lot of the qualifications are written in a different language that none of us are really savvy with. But, so it's just, it's, over the years, and it's been a while where we've been chipping away at this, it's been interesting just to sort of see the town's awareness. And, I mean, I, I can't brag enough about our police department and what a mutual relationship we have in regards to sort of working these things out. So, you know, it's, it's pretty, I, I think we're pretty impressive in that, that we've taken that on. Because they were dicey regs to write, because there's just not really a, there's not a standard out there. So we had to be pretty careful. I mean, we can't just kibosh every business out there with regulation. And we had to really just go for basic standards of hygiene and care and whatnot to do and whatnot to say and whatnot to offer.
Our regulations are almost, are really more almost a registration, so that we know who they are, which just by doing that discourages a certain number of people from even opening business. So, and this, most of the communities around us don't regulate body work, so it's very easy for them to just open up somewhere else. Which is fine, as long as it's not Melrose.
It's an ongoing community frustration, I know, and it has been for some time, so it's good to hear that. It's still at the top of the priority list there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Julie.
I just had a quick follow-up, because I, I think you touched upon vaping and tobacco, but not so much about opioids. So I just want to, you know, from a resource standpoint, make sure that we're resourced appropriately, because I, it doesn't sound like it's a crisis that's going away. And I know I've known of two families at least this year who have lost very young people and have, you know, asked about things like support services, family services in town, and, you know, staying in town, going out of town. So just in general, and are we covering Narcan? That may be under a different budget from emergency services, but where does all that fit into this?
So Narcan is in a couple of different places. The school department pays for it for the schools, police department pays in fireplace for them. We, we are actually well-budgeted for that particular issue. We do have a federal grant. It's our second five-year federal grant. We're in year one, one of our second five years. But once that's done, that's done. That's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year, so five years from now, we'll be back.
We'll be coming.
We'll be back looking for.
We'll see a big difference in that budget.
Yeah, a hundred thousand dollars. It does, we do have a full-time substance abuse coordinator, Catherine, who you all know, plus a part-time youth coordinator, Kara Showers. So the, the federal grant that we have, which by the way was not on furlough, is youth-focused. Although we do work, we, we have expanded it where we can to non-youth services. We also work very, very closely with our Mystic Valley Public Health Coalition, so that a lot of the work we do, including being part of a regional opiate grant, specifically opiates, we do on a regional basis, because, as you know, it's not just. And the latest project is a communications project, talking, having, helping parents talk with their kids about opiates and drugs in general.
Can I just give one quick update?
Sure.
Come to the house. Hello, I'm Catherine Dinger, the coordinator of the Wake Up Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. And I'm very excited to announce that on February first, we will have a part-time recovery coach supporting the community of Wakefield. So that's something the police department and our Wake Up Coalition have been working on for a couple of years. And we're excited to have the support, support from the town. So we can contract out with a professional from Elliot, who will be supervised by a professional recovery coach supervisor. So we've looked at models across the state, and we feel like this is the best practice. So that's someone that's going to be able to support those families in crisis and support individuals with the help that they need. Someone that has learned experience, but is also experienced, trained recovery coach. So I'm really thrilled that that's coming to Wakefield starting next week. And we're working with the library, we're working with our communications director on a strategic plan to get the services out there. And they'll be working really closely with our family service officer and our part-time social worker through Elliot as well. So we're really excited about being able to offer this service, and it's something that we know is needed and will be utilized.
That's great.
Can you also talk a little bit about the diversion program? Because I don't think, I think that's another big program.
And we have a diversion program with the police department. So any individual that is a minor who is caught in the community, now.
First offense.
First offense. They will not go, if they are deemed eligible, they will not go to the court system. They will come to our diversion program, which has a community service component, an education component, a counseling component, a parent referral component. So it's this program we've developed based off of Redding's diversion. And now we're thrilled the high school is using it and the vocational school. So we typically have about ten youth in each class that we provide services to. So that's, that's again, prevention for more upstream, but, but youth that are.
And that's a new program this year for us. And Catherine worked really, really hard on, on that and working with Melrose. And we do it with Melrose, so Melrose students also can be part of ours, so.
And two shameless plugs for Catherine. She's working with the Attorney General in a conference on vaping March first.
March first, and then next week I'm going down to Washington with Maureen and one of our youth. And Jason Lewis will be virally, virally presenting with us at a national conference called From Jeweling in the Bathroom to Tobacco Twenty-One: How Youth, How Youth Education Can Influence Statewide Policy. So it's really about our model here in Wakefield and how it did influence the statewide Tobacco Twenty-One efforts and our work with our local Board of Health. So we're excited to be representing Wakefield on a national level.
That's great.
That's great.
That's not shameless, that's Wakefield.
Make us proud.
Just one question on the, and I'll grab Paul. The Narcan cost per unit, what, what does that cost? Just information, just.
Well, actually, we just bought some in Melrose. We are, we can get it at a reduced cost, and they come in two-packs.
Okay.
And I'm trying to remember what we just paid for. It was less than a hundred dollars.
So a hundred dollars for a two-pack?
Less than, yeah, less than a hundred dollars.
How many roughly do we use in Wakefield? Any idea, like, per year?
Are you talking about the police department?
Well, just, I don't know if you have an overall stat, or just, you probably just have your information.
Right, we have, I don't have that data from this year.
Yeah, we're just curious.
And, and the dosages, unfortunately, with fentanyl have gone up, so where it used to be one.
So that's a police question?
Yeah.
Probably, okay. We're just curious.
You may want to also ask them, though, how many people separate from how many doses?
Right, okay.
Because it's taking two, three, four, sometimes five doses of Narcan to revive some of the people, so. It may be five doses, one person.
Right, okay. Interesting, sad but interesting, yeah. Paul.
Just a real quick, thank you very much for all the information that you've provided so far. Eastern Middlesex mosquito has gone up eight thousand. What are you attributing that to?
Gone up what? No.
The request has gone from nineteen-three to twenty-seven-four, according to this.
No. From twenty-six.
No, yeah.
Eastern Middlesex?
Yeah, it only went up.
It went up.
Oh, the nineteen?
Right.
So it went from nine, so, so in nine, in two thousand eighteen, it was nineteen-three thirty that you appropriated?
That's a mistake. It, we went up, I think it's two-point-three percent this year, which is pretty much what they ask for each year, somewhere between two and a half, about two and a half percent a year.
I was actually saying that that's a good thing, not that it was a bad thing.
No, no.
So if it went up to twenty-seven, I'd be all far, going up to twenty-seven.
I know you would.
I think we need to do a better. I think we need to do a better job on that end of it as well, because it needs to be expanded from what we are currently doing, in my opinion.
Well, we can do as much mosquito control as you want to pay for.
And at some time in, in the near future, I would like this council to consider an increase of some sort to generate in the areas that we aren't grabbing right now. Because we have a lot of areas in the town that could potentially produce it.
I, well, I would respectfully disagree with you on that. Because we do, we do the truck spraying only when our trap show which areas are high at that time. We don't truck spray just on a, you know, first Thursday of the month kind of thing.
No, no, I didn't say that.
So I, I feel like the truck spraying, we're in line with, we do aerial spraying for the large wetlands.
Do, oh, you still do the aerial?
Yep, mhm, in April.
Okay, so I didn't know you did the.
We still do that. And then we do individual hand spraying for small areas on a requested basis, so.
See, I didn't understand that you, the aerials, that I thought it was all done by truck now.
Oh, no, no.
And the truck can't reach all areas.
No, we also do catch basins.
Right.
Maybe we should give you a little, we'll give you a little presentation on our mosquito control program.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say it on the questions, comments? Okay, so all in favor of the Board of Health budget number twenty-six?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
And if I can add at the end.
Yes, please.
When I go and talk to our other managers around the area, they are amazed at how much our Board of Health is doing. They are years behind us. So, great job, Ruth and your whole team. Julie, excellent.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, Kevin, don't go anywhere. It's number thirty-seven, which is number seven on our list, miscellaneous town council.
Miscellaneous town council budget, we're requesting an increase for two thousand twenty of one thousand dollars. This increases is under the materials and supply. It's a new line item for the Humans Rights Commission. Main expenses within this budget, the training line item, five thousand dollars. The cost to run town meetings, two thousand for the janitors, fifteen hundred for the checkers. We have an unclassified line item, which is a catch-all, twelve thousand two fifty. And the dues and subscription line item, thirty-five hundred dollars, which is used for the town council's portion of the MMA dues. Total request is twenty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Move to accept miscellaneous, miscellaneous town council budget of twenty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-five.
Second. Thank you. Questions, comments?
Kevin, could you just explain how the Human Rights Commission ended up as a part of this budget?
This is a catch-all, basically, budget that, there was a new line item that was requested for a sum of money for the Humans Rights Commission, so it was decided to drop it into this budget.
And going forward, would it always be on this budget, or would it be differently budgeted?
Unless the budget expands to the portion, to the point where, what, we break it out separately. If I can just add to that, Ed's point, will we get an explanation of how that money is spent from the Human Rights Commission? Different question, yes.
Julie.
What's a town meeting checker?
People that check you in.
Oh, the people who check you in. It was so.
Be very literal with that.
Literal that I missed it.
Excellent question, Julie.
And I will say, thank you for the, the Human Rights line item. I, I had, had said many times that I really think that if it's a value that we have in town, then we should be very transparent about their budget and not have them go begging for cookies from our businesses, so.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor of the number thirty-seven miscellaneous town council budget?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, seven-zero. We're going to pass on, or move to a future meeting, the General Insurance, number thirty-nine. So just mark that. So we'll move on to number nine, which is number forty for the Medicare.
Actually, the last budget tonight will be the Medicare budget.
Yes.
We, we are requesting an increase of forty-six thousand five hundred and ten dollars over the current year's budget. This budget is used to pay for the town's portion of the Medicare tax. This is a salary-based tax for employees hired after nineteen eighty-six. The tax rate is one-point-four-five percent. This includes projected and anticipated salary increases for fiscal twenty-twenty. Total budget request is seven hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred and ten dollars.
I move to accept the Medicare budget of seven fifty-five, five hundred and ten dollars.
Second.
Questions, comments, anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. So as Kevin said, number ten, number forty-three on our budget charts. Work is compled, will also be moved to a future meeting. Okay, thank you very much, Kevin. Okay, next, we have Eagle Scout presentations. And let's start with the Patty Heights Veteran Memorial Restoration with Joshua Polishek. Welcome. And this is to become an Eagle Scout, right? This project that you over the top?
Yeah, currently I'm a life scout. I'm going to be going for Eagle if this is approved.
What can we do to help you besides letting you do the presentation?
I just need, I just need approval to do the project.
Okay, well, we want to help you for sure, so take it away. Patty Heights Veterans Memorial Restoration.
Yeah, so my name is Joshua Polishek. I'm a life scout in Troop Seven-O-One. This is for the Patty Heights Memorial. If you don't know, it's a veterans memorial near my home on the top of Melvin Street. It was dedicated to the Irish-American soldiers of this town who fought in World War Two. So currently, this is what the park looks like. I don't know if this is going to show up on that. It's not going to. So we have over here, this section part is just for organizational purposes. It's got this stone wall on the side, and the main centerpiece is here, this bush and flag setup. So there's the, a plaque with the commemorative Irish-American soldiers dedicated to them. Then there's a flagpole with a bush surrounding it. Over on this side, it's basically untouched. There's a rock, a tree on a small hill, and over here on section one, it's pretty flat. So I was thinking that that's where we could do some of the developments. Basically, when I go up there, if you, if you compare this memorial to something like the memorial that we have at the Common, it's a bigger setup. There's a brick path with names on it. It's just more developed, I guess you could say. So some of the, but it has its own air, I guess. Like how there's a street and all that stuff around it, it just feels kind of busier. So with this being more on a hill and with this natural stuff, I sort of felt like we should keep with that theme. So the developments that I wanted to put in, Google wasn't the best at drawing straight lines. I had, so there's this path, which, the material is currently up for debate, but what we're talking about a lot, me and the director of the DPW, we're talking, we're talking about doing wood chips or gravel. We would surround the, this bush and flag and the plaque with flowers, keeping with the theme. And the biggest part of this is this path leads, and up here we have, on the top of that hill, we're going to be putting in benches, just so it sort of fits with everything. And there's been a lot of talk about what those are going to be made of. We've talked about doing it out of wood, but we're actually looking more towards a donation of granite. It's rock, it should keep with the whole theme, it'll be sturdy, it should work out pretty well. So the plan that we have is this path, if there's enough material, in addition to this, there's this secondary path over here by the plaque that could be added. Or if you want, we can make that a required part of the project. We are seeking a donation from the town for the wood chip. We are seeking a donation from the town for the wood chips or a local tree company, depending on what's available. For the flagpole area, that, that actually got changed. The donation that we're seeking is from a local company. Capone's Landscaping is one that we're considering. And the benches may be bought or made. Old New England Granite is the company. I've heard that they got a, that they started reclaiming some granite recently, and I figured we could see if we could implement that. I have this project supported by both Mr. Stinson on the DPW and Mr. Pennett on the Veterans Advisory Board, who is the beneficiary of this project. And he's informed me that the American Legion is going to be going around throughout the country. And they're going to be checking on memorials and whatnot, that they don't have, memorials, dedications, all that stuff that they don't have registered. And I figured, well, that works out great, because we should have this look as best as we can for that. So let me know your thoughts.
I think the, the area definitely could use some attention drawn to it. I pass that area all the time, and it's a, you know, it's, you wouldn't know to look. So I love your idea. The fact that you're working with Mr. Stinson and Mr. Pennett is excellent. I mentioned to Steve, ideally, I think it would be better to call it the Irish-American Veterans than Patty Heights. Now, being one myself, I mean, paddy wagon is not used because it's very offensive to my people getting thrown in there, and we don't call the gulch by a certain name that we got rid of.
Because it's part of my history, but that's okay.
No, but we don't call it the name that I grew up calling, you know, we all called it.
Because I am one, but that's okay.
I just, you know, I'm just curious about that. And I understand the historical significance of that area, but I do, you know, having something that says Irish-American might be a better idea.
It says, unfortunately, well, I can certainly prefer to use that, but I'm pretty sure that, well, I'm not pretty sure.
The plaque says Patty Heights. Oh, absolutely, and I drive by it, but I didn't know if there was any, I don't know. We're keeping the same plaque. That's the point.
Yeah, that would be, that would be pretty costly to.
Yeah, no, if we're keeping the same plaque, that's okay.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's just, it just struck me, you know. It's a term we don't use.
I can change the name of the, I can change the name.
Right, you know, honestly, if you change the name, Irish-American Veterans Memorial Restoration, but the plaque is historical and it says Patty Heights, and it's not as offensive as a term as a lot of others out there.
It does say dedicated to, it does say Irish-American specifically in that part.
I think it's great. I'm all for the projects.
Thank you.
Josh, I have a quick question. I'm going to pull Maureen in a bit. For the bench situation, benches have been a hot item in Wakefield. We're trying to create a different atmosphere than just having, I'm not, this is just because you're up in front of us. It's nothing to do with you. So we love what you're doing, but we're trying to be consistent throughout the town with our bench policy that we're working on currently. Coincidence. So Maureen, was there a certain zone that we're identifying for benches that we're, or is it the town? Can you give me a little bit of a, as our bench liaison?
The committee's met three times. We haven't drafted our policy yet, but we were, what this group and what we're thinking was, it's the lake and public parks. I think for uniformity's sake, I would maybe think we don't approve the bench until the policy comes out. We're hoping in a couple of weeks, we'll be back here with a policy. We're meeting next, right, in a couple of weeks, Steve? So hopefully by, by March, we come back with a policy and, and, and maybe, I would almost recommend just holding on on the bench part of it. I also would be curious to know, just a new sign, what it would cost if we do want to look into changing the name. Just, you know, I'd be curious about that, but I love the gravel and the, and like, I love that. I would just hold off on the bench until we get our policy. But the policy will come before this committee. We're not.
Would it be the, sorry, would it be the same model as like the ones in the Common?
So we're trying to figure that out. So we're trying to figure out what we're going to do.
Yeah, so timeframe-wise, not to mess up your, your timeframe either. We should be able to work together. Do you have a timeframe? Do you have to finish this by in order to get to be an Eagle Scout and?
Yes, there is a timeframe. It has to be by my, I have to be, I have to complete this before I turn eighteen. My birthday is in August, and I'm looking to get this started. It just says early spring, so like around May, April. I can hold off till March.
Okay, so it's not going to do any, okay, great. I just didn't want to interfere with the whole process. It's a great idea, and I'm sure there's more questions to come. But I was just thinking, as soon as you said bench, I looked at Maureen, you know, we all know what we've been doing with benches and what we're not doing, so it's important.
All right, I can hold off on the benches, yeah.
Okay, and then, but we'll hopefully clear that up fairly quickly too, so you can plan ahead.
All right, sure.
But that's great.
Let me know about the sign too.
Okay, and any other questions? It's just the bench caught my ear right away, so.
Great job cleaning up that area. That's a great job.
Yeah, it's fabulous.
Great idea.
And we want to help you get to the Eagle Scout stage.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'm just, this is, I feel like this is a little bit of, it's a memorial, it's a bit of a standalone in that way, and we're talking granite. You, you identified granite as, as a material because of the tie-in, you know, with it, so. I understand, I understand the bench policy and the uniformity of it, and around the lake or in the parks, we don't want to have eight different types of benches. This just feels like such a standalone from just the, the objectives that we're trying to hit with, with, you know, around the lake. I don't know, I don't know what your timeline, I don't want to alienate the folks that were potentially going to be providing the, you know, granite benches, which sounds like a great idea, especially at a memorial, to have that kind of permanency to it. In a way that, when you're walking around the lake, you want to have uniformity, but you don't need to have granite benches to do that, you know, so. I don't know, I just think it adds an element to it that is separate and apart from, I don't see it as a bench, it's just an extension of the memorial itself.
Get back, just get back to me on that and let me know what's up.
Yeah, so why don't we vote on everything except maybe the bench, or do we consider this section different than a park and different than the extension of?
I would. And granite's beautiful. I don't know why we would ever turn away donated granite, because it's so set apart.
At a memorial, like this is like, it's totally separate.
I'd say if you get it.
Okay, because it's just important. We've been doing so much bench work. I just didn't want to have that.
But around the lake and.
Oh, I know, I know, but again, we talked about parks. As long as we're in sync, I don't mind, as long as we're.
I move that we approve Joshua's project for Patty Heights Veterans Memorial Restoration. Antares McGonigal approves this. I mean, moves for it. Or, you know.
And I'll second that.
You know, in total.
Okay, so you want to approve this in total?
Yep, I'm good.
I second.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I would just say if it does, if it's not granite, then you come, you come back and we try to make it as consistent as we can.
That's great.
I will, I will say that we have six volunteers who have already spent eight hours studying this, and the, I get that it's not part of the lake, but there's actually things at the lake that don't look like there's supposed to be benches around the lake, which is what we went to other parks. So, so, you know, I feel a little like for the other volunteers who have studied this at seven AM on a Saturday morning, that we can approve it and just wait, and if the granite, you know, it, this will actually be addressed in our policy. Like, that's the whole point of writing a policy, so that we don't do these one-offs each time, and each time, kind of look at, we'll have a policy to follow. So I just, I want to be respectful of everyone sitting around that table and that.
Sure, I understand.
You know, this is exactly why we're writing the policy, so these one-off things don't happen.
Well, I think it's a little bit different. I think that in, the policy was a lot to do with people that were looking to make a specific one bench donation, and there was not the continuity around the lake. And so being able to have guidelines and, and aesthetic, that, that was, that was really what drove the committee to be formed.
And we've been talking a lot about this, the whole town, right, Ed, what you're doing with main streets and sign-by laws. It's to kind of have uniformity throughout the entire town. So I don't, and, and, right, right.
Yeah, and that's why I think when we have, we're talking about a memorial, if we're talking about a granite memorial, to have a granite bench seems like it's a permanent. I, I think I've said my piece.
Okay, so there's two different parts though. So we either approve everything as is with Josh's presentation, which is great. Again, this is just, you get caught up in a little bit of an intrigue in the town. So, so we approve everything as is with Josh's presentation, or, and we consider it a one-off, or we approve a part of it.
Well, there's an emotion in second.
There's an emotion on the table, so we can vote on it.
Okay, so the motion on the table, okay, so.
So we can vote on it.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. We've already had a second. So all in favor of the current presentation, section one, two, with Joshua Polishek? All in favor? All right, so what do we have for votes here?
Four to three.
Four to three, okay. So it's approved. All opposed? Opposed?
Well, for now.
I'm opposed to the motion of the approval of the whole thing.
Okay.
Only because it includes the bench.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just to be clear, the construction of the bench is still an open issue at this point. It hasn't been determined whether it's going to be granite or something.
Okay, so you don't even know, right?
I'll hold.
Okay, all right.
I need to go through a couple of stages of approval between different groups before I can start work and look for donations, so I can hold off till March.
So just to be clear, if it's, we've approved granite. If it's not granite, we revisit the issue.
Yeah, I'll update you.
Perfect. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Joshua.
Thank you, Joshua. Okay. Okay, Spencer Little, Dog Park, Dog Agility Course. One of my favorite subjects on the planet.
Hi.
Welcome.
I'm Spencer Little, I'm thirteen, and I'm the same as him, life to Eagle. I'm from Troop Seven O One, again, same. And I'm here to ask you to be the beneficiary for my Eagle project, so. There we go. All right. So I've lived in Wakefield my whole life.
So Josh, Spencer, sorry, when do you turn eighteen? That's the key thing, I guess, with the.
Five years.
You have five years?
Four and a half years.
Oh, okay.
Take your time.
So, um, so I'm an eighth grader in the Galvin Middle School, and I'm also part of the Order of the Arrow, which is the National Honor Society of Scouting. I was our Project Three Fifty-One, two thousand nineteen ambassador. I was also the Wakefield Education Foundation Award recipient back in fifth grade. I've got the Four Star General Award, and I love swimming, shooting, and baseball, so it's a little bit about me.
That's fantastic, yeah.
Yeah. So I want to build a agility course at the Wakefield Dog Park on Main Street. The purpose of it would be basically a place where the owner and the dog can make a special bond, where it's not just based off of, you know, treats, it's based off of doing physical things together. And my build date would be somewhere in April. That's the hope at least. So things it would have is weaving poles for the dogs to go in between. There would be a jump, which would be, well, at the moment, we want it to be movable, because, you know, dogs are not all the same size. So we're not a hundred percent sure on how we're going to do it right now. And then we would have a tire tunnel for the, it's going to be a giant tire, basically, for the dogs to run through. And a ramp where they would go up and down, I mean, as a ramp works. Is there any questions?
Okay, questions, Paul?
I know that you've looked over the site, and I'm just looking at the components that you're going to try to place in there. Is the site going to hold all four of those items and still leave areas for not, for passive, for passive dogs?
So I went there, and I actually measured like the whole thing out just to make sure.
Excellent.
And actually, when I was there, a lot of people, as you do, are like, asked me, why are you measuring the dog park, you know? So when I told them, all of them were very positive about it and were very interested in having an agility course for their dogs. And none of them, or no, all of them said that they would at least give it a try, you know, see if, well, one, their dog would like it, if they like it. So there's definitely interest in the town to do it. Yeah, I've already forgot the question. What's the question?
Four components, four components in the area that we already have, how will they fit in that area?
So I want to, if you're walking into the dog park, the back right corner, there is a one little spot for like the dogs to drink. And then on the left corner, there's like one spot for, like, there's just a line of trees, basically. And I want to put it almost in between those. And I've figured out that there is enough space there for like a circle of the four components.
Okay, so you're trying to set it as far back as possible, using the two rear corners?
Yes.
Very good, very good.
Any other questions?
It just seemed like a lot of material, especially the ramp.
When will you be able to like show us like a sketch maybe of what, I'm just thinking about the area too, just to see where, I mean, some dogs certainly are going to participate. They would like to, but they can't or don't want to. But I'm just thinking about, just safety-wise, too, just having twenty dogs there. If it's in the back, it seems like it would possibly fit in pretty well. But if it was in the middle, it really would be probably a tough, tough fit, safety-wise. But when will you be able to like, I know you've done the measurements, but will you have a sketch sometime soon just to show us where it actually fits in? Yeah, that'd be great.
I guess four and a half years to get it back.
I know, but, but that's right, but it's just, it's good that he's, he's thinking of these things, and, you know, there's a lot of people that use it, so it's certainly a nice add-on. It just depends on how it fits in, which you've been thinking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I use the park myself for both of my dogs. My one concern would be maintenance, so the wood ramp makes me a little bit nervous, because we don't want it to look shoddy and, you know, the weather, the New England weathers might be tricky on that. You know, the tire, I think, could look really cool, and, but I think seeing it a little more structured, a little more of a plan, might help us envision it, because we also want to be careful to not put too many things in that could change the nature of the park. But I think it's a, it's a great idea.
Thank you. Julie?
And I would just say, when you're thinking about it, just things like lighting and other components around public safety, just, I wouldn't want somebody falling over it at night. I'm not sure how it's all set up. Just keep that in mind.
All right.
Charlie?
And I know Joshua reached out to Director Stinson. Have you reached out to Director Stinson as well?
Not yet.
Okay, but you might want to make that a.
It's with Dennis.
It was with Dennis. Okay. Okay, good. But love the project, have a dog, does not like the dog park, unfortunately, but good luck.
He may like the duck bug after he's done that. I mean, he's waiting for that.
Steve, did you say, Spencer, you've spoken with Mr. Fazio?
No, we should have Dennis sit down and go over the scale of it.
I would maybe suggest, I'd hate to drag you back here again, but maybe there's some community service civics, some other lesson you could get out of us. But maybe table it until you talk to Mr. Fazio, because I think he is really the person who he put that dog park together, and he knows what can work and what might be tricky to work. I don't know if I'm putting too much, too much of a burden on you, but I think it might, that might help us envision it a little bit better.
All right.
We can do that.
Okay.
It'll help you in the end, because you might do all this work upfront and then find out from Mr. Fazio that it's not going to work, so.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
So we'd be happy to talk to you.
And we could put that together in the next week.
Yes.
Yeah.
You won't lose any momentum.
Great.
So, I mean, I just have to show off my dog.
Well, if you didn't have one, you'd have to get one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Great job, boys.
Thank you.
So he's got five years. He's got to hurry up now, right? Okay, so the next item is the annual town meeting, setting the date for April twenty ninth, twenty nineteen.
Yes, that date is really dictated by the charter.
Okay.
As late as we can get it, it'll still be within the charter, so we would suggest we'll have most of our work done, or all of our work done by then. So we'd ask that you set the date, open the warrant, and then close the warrant for when people can put in articles, and we will be advertising all of that per the statute.
Okay, so we can vote on this all as one slate?
If someone wanted to put it in three portions, we'll just take them separately, sure.
Okay. So do I have a motion to set the date for April twenty ninth, twenty nineteen, for the annual town meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. And the open warrant, so I have a motion for the open warrant?
So moved.
Any seconds?
Second.
All in favor of the open warrant, annual town meeting? Aye. Opposed, hearing none. The warrant close date, March twenty eighth, twenty nineteen. The warrant close date, March twenty eighth, twenty nineteen, do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, the warrant close date is March twenty eighth, twenty nineteen.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, thanks Steve.
Mark that date down on your calendars.
Yeah.
Right.
Just one night, right? Just one night, well, it's up to you.
Just one night, right.
I'm betting the overhead.
I always think of four, when I put it in.
Is it a big, is it big things happening?
Could be, could be.
Okay, next on the agenda is the parking. Paul, do you want to kick off some of the parking conversation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we've been discussing parking now since September, since last September, October, when we conducted a couple of forums with the community and the businesses. From those meetings, as it was presented here, our previous meetings, at, on, with the council, we've come up with a couple of items that we wish to present at a date, that when this entire council can cast a vote. Some of the items that we've agreed upon and we've already made statement to was the signage time, and that was to increase the signage time in areas from one hour to two hour parking. And basically, it would be the business districts, but it would be townwide to a point. And I'll get to that in a second. Times of enforcement through the forums and through discussions with this board would remain from eight AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday. And the signs would reflect both items. It would reflect the two hour parking as well as its enforceable time period. So that people know that when they're parking there, they know the window for which they, it will be enforced, which is something that doesn't happen now. People, two hour parking, but they don't know when. So if they park there after six o'clock, they always worry, am I gonna get a ticket? No, you're not going to get a ticket after six. So it's just something that we thought would be an added component to it. Further discussion was where we would make the enforceability in, as far as town land was concerned. When we talked about additional parking spaces, we had them work on the Water Street site, which they did a fabulous job of getting three brand new lights put in there, they cleared it out. It's being actively used now. Okay, so I'd be interested to see which businesses are taking advantage of it, because the whole wooden fence area off Water Street now is full every day. So it's being used because we created an area for them, so merchants or businesses are using it.
Are commuters using it?
You know something, I wouldn't put it past that a couple of them are.
Yes.
There are a few commuters that are still using the Lincoln Street parking lot. There are a few that are still using Lincoln Street.
Right.
And Main Street.
There are numbers of them, but there's nothing that we can do until we find that enforceability.
Sure.
Right.
Which, again, everything in due time. And we're just trying to get to that one point. So, we have Lincoln Street parking lot, we have Water Street now. We have the lot that's undefined behind Brightview, okay? Which should at some point be considered to be defined. The same signage that is in the Lincoln Street parking lot should be put in the Brightview lot as well, too. So the signage in the Lincoln Street lot that currently says two hour parking, no overnight parking. Okay, so that's something that you may want to do in that respect, as far as parking is concerned. I'm not sure how we feel as far as directing people to the Town Hall parking area in off hours. I don't know how we would do that, but that was another suggestion that came up. What we do in one area, we need to do in all areas, though. I personally am not a believer in assigning stickers to merchants that gives them carte blanche parking during the day. Okay, but it has been talked about out there in the streets, but I just can't get myself, we've given eleven parking spaces that, Mr. Mayo came up with eleven locations. Three of them are constantly being used, the remaining, the ones down at the Civic Center, one or two. The five at Town Hall on Commerce Street are never used. Yet, we've heard the merchants and we tried to help the merchants, say, just come in and get your placard. You can park here all day long, you won't get tagged. No one's taking advantage of it. So, I don't see us having to do the sticker, that's a component. I mean, that's just my opinion on this. We all went to the MMA convention and we went to the exhibition downstairs. When I went in, I looked through the yellow sheet that we had and found the two exhibitions that had traffic as part of their component. And both of them had handheld devices that we could use to initiate when a person started parking there, and have a timeout that when they would have to be rechecked again. It looked like something that we might want to consider. Through our discussions at previous meetings, we also discussed possibly having the higher two part-time people to do the enforcing side of this. Due to details that we want to bring up further, we've asked Ed to do a little bit of a financial thing, to see if we can get numbers as to the handheld and, and, I mean, Ed can speak to that. Based upon what I noticed when I was going through the paperwork again today, I brought it to the lieutenant's attention prior to the meeting, there are attachments, five attachments to our two eleven rules, that have been put in place by times when the lieutenant has come in here and said, the Traffic Advisory Committee recommends us doing this change at such and such a location. Well, if we did a two hour increased townwide, we'd have to wipe out five pages of TAC recommendations, because there are some in here that say fifteen minute parking, some say no parking. So, I mean, we have to go over this list.
Why couldn't we have a combination of some fifteen?
We could, but I would like the lieutenant to tell us which ones are, where we can convert completely the two, and which ones have to stay enforced. This way here, we can present that whole list. So I'm asking, I mean, but I would still like to hear discussion on this, but I'm going to ask that we not vote on anything tonight. Afford us the opportunity to have Ed look up and give us the information on the financial side and to give his voice on that. And also for me to sit with the lieutenant and go over the attachment to make sure that we're not changing the hours on the street that needs to be less hour time, not a full two hours. I think pretty much that's where we stand at this point, Mr. Chair.
Well, welcome, Lieutenant Scory, we haven't introduced you because Paul was, you know, involved right away, which is fine, but welcome, thank you for coming. You've been to, you're actually in charge of the parking advisory committee, so that's a key component for tonight's discussion. Did Ed, did you say something?
I could just briefly pick up from Paul on that.
Okay.
I think one of the things that we're all realizing is that the enforcement piece is a critical piece to this. And there's not, it doesn't seem like there's one obvious solve, but it's gonna be a combination of a number of things that we're doing relative to parking. So one of them is enforcement. It's very well known, I know Paul in his work too has determined that you just have too many, especially merchants, that are parking in front of their businesses for the whole day. And you, there's nothing you can do to harm your business more than park in front of it all day. And, so the hope is that with these devices, they're very high tech now, they're handhelds, they're basically, in essence, you see here of chalking, it's virtual chalking, so that it doesn't actually touch the vehicle, but you get in the plate number and you identify where the valves are in the tires, and then, two hours later, you come through and you're able to check that way. That's how the technology works, it's very streamlined, very easy. The expectation is that just getting cars in circulation, in and out of those spots, will open up more opportunities for parking. I don't know what that percentage is going to look like, is it twenty-five or thirty percent more availability than we currently have? Maybe, you know, but it's something along those lines potentially. But it's gonna be better than what we have now. I am, I've been speaking with the company, getting more information, kind of going through the numbers on that, to make sure that we have an arrangement that is, that is self-supporting, and it's, so it's not going to be an outlay for the taxpayers, but instead, if this works as it should, the expectation would be that if we hire on two folks part-time, then the citations would more than pay for them, and also provide the obvious benefit. Another piece to this too, which I think is important, but I want to make sure that we have consensus on this, these functions are functions that are better for someone not in uniform. So, having the police, you know, they are specially trained and they provide great resources for us, but having the police go around and scanning license plates is not, is not a good use of their time or our town resources, you know, candidly. So, being able to have some sort of cooperation there does make sense, but the idea of, you know, the police taking, taking charge of this, it doesn't make any financial sense. And it, and it, and it's, we, they have, they're so well-trained, they're better utilized in other ways within our town. But having two part-time folks does make a lot of sense, and it should be ideally, worst case, budget neutral. But the hope is that at least it'll be, it'll be something that will, and this is not, you know, we've talked to, and I think the consensus of this, this body is not to have, not to be charging for parking, so that we're not talking about charging parking or meters and the like, we're talking about, you know, having a, you know, two hour window of free parking, but having it rotate out. So that's, that's kind of where it stands. I think by next meeting, we'll have more info on that, and we'll be in a better position to vote on that, you know, with the information we need.
Okay. Comments, any other comments? Lieutenant Scory, did you want to make any comments?
I just, I wanted to touch on the technology piece. Any technology that's out there would certainly be helpful. We've been using an archaic method for the last hundred years to write parking tickets, making a list of license plates and making our way back after the two hour time period. It's, it's time consuming and, and like you said, time could be better spent. Welcome the, the opportunity to have some help with the parking tickets. We have plenty of roles that we play in the community, and unfortunately, we don't always get back to write the parking tickets, so the help we can get with that would be helpful. Mr. Donaco, the list you have of parking restrictions, we would have to go through that with a fine tooth comb. There are, there are decisions that have been brought before the board that date back probably twenty to twenty-five years ago. Some of those restrictions may be out of date now, need to be amended, so welcome the opportunity to sit with you and go through that.
If we end up having a two-person, two-part-time parking people, would they report to, something to discuss? Reporting to the police, reporting to Steve, you know, I mean, but, that's another part.
It's open.
Open, okay, so it's just something else to think about, though.
He's pointing at me, I'm...
Yeah, yeah. I don't know, it's just, it's a small, small part, but it's just another part of the puzzle. So I think it's good, I think that the parking all day long, taking the trains, taking the buses, that's unacceptable. The employees are still befuddled of thinking why someone would even want their employees parking, clogging the streets up. I don't care where it is. So it's convenient, but your business is critical, you're not gonna have employees, so why would you do that? Amber up, good point about that parking over on Water Street. Are there some commuters parking there all day? I don't know, it's just things we need to, we can address that later with enforcement, but I think it's high time to change a lot of things.
Couple of things, if I could.
Sure, yes, please, Steve.
You know, we had a number of meetings with the merchants, this was kind of a consensus, a growing consensus among them as we went through number of hours and what have you, with the fifteen minute strategic places, you know, around there. We also have to make sure that we look at our other business section in town that is really thriving. I was actually down there today, and what I'm hearing is Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, it is just, and it's booming down there in Greenwood. So, I think we have to look at that area too, where we have the Armlet Headquarters Lot, lack of a better name, on Water Street. We gotta push some stuff out there to help that area too, so we'll be looking at that too. But it was, it's a good consensus, and I think anecdotally, since the Water Street Lot has been open, it has been a little clearer for parking in the downtown, which is, which is interesting from a day-to-day standpoint, so...
Right.
Peter?
Yes?
I do know people are parking overnight at the Armlet Street Lots, what is that policy, Steve? Because we have a snowstorm on Sunday, you drive by the lot on a Wednesday, and there's still snow-covered vehicles in that parking lot, so, you know, people are...
We do not have that post-up, that's something we want to come back with. But that's a good point.
Yeah.
With the handheld that Ed was talking about too, one of the features was that when the violation does occur, the same handheld spits out the ticket as well.
Yeah, right.
So that's a nice feature, that you don't have to have a secondary unit to issue the ticket to, or you don't have to physically write out the ticket. It's all one component, which was a nice feature when they were discussing that. So this, it does it all.
One of the things I like about that is, as it is now, an officer may make a list of license plates. A lot happens in the police world within one hour, two hour time period, and they just can't get back. But if you have that device, the information's recorded, you can hand off the device to another officer, and it's taken care of.
Right, you also have photographic evidence too, so that there's any dispute about, you know, the legitimacy of it, you have it right there. So it's, there are a lot of advantages, the technology is very cool, and it's, it's literally right in your hands.
I think, like you say, it'll, it'll pay for itself in the end.
I expect so.
Ed, do you need more time, you think, like, the next meeting, is that enough time for you to do the comparison?
I've been speaking with the company, and I'm hoping to have a visual too, next meeting, so I think it should be okay.
So we should be able to vote at the next meeting, Paul?
I think that between now and then, the lieutenant and I can get that, addendum.
I know it's five pages, that's why I wanted to make sure. I'd like to get this resolved for the next meeting, that'd be great, because it's been thirty, forty years since this...
He tells me when, I'll be there.
So, the word resolved makes me a little nervous.
Okay.
We are paying a consultant to completely look at and change a lot of things about traffic and patterns downtown. So I think we can do certain things, but I, I don't see this as curing the downtown parking right now.
I don't think it's going to be parking, I think it's more of how long people are in parking spots. More, we're not going to add additional parking, we're not going to change traffic patterns. It's just taking care of what's in place now, in, in saying, if you're in that spot, it's not a spot, it should be there for eight hours. We would like you to move every two hours, okay?
And I think too, I'm just kind of curious to see what'll happen. We really haven't had meaningful enforcement, and I'm curious to see what that will result in. So it'll be a good kind of test run for us to know what impact enforcement will have, and that will also help to inform our consultants as well, but no, certainly, it's, it's not, not taking the place of what the work they're doing by any means. It's more just, it's more focused on the enforcement.
Well, and I hope, because we haven't seen a draft of the policy, so we'll see that before we vote on it, but I hope there's a lot of focus on enforcement, and I actually hope we do some education, as long, you know, there's always talk that people don't know about certain lots that we have.
Right.
And people don't know about ulteriors of, you know, outside of Greenwood, what side streets you can go park on. And so I hope that this isn't strictly all about enforcement, and that we actually have some stuff about education in there, so people know, you know, that you are actually allowed to park overnight, except if there's a snow ban, right? Like, there's a lot to be done on education-wise for the town as well.
Great.
I could speak for, if I could speak for a second on the enforcement part of that. I can tell you that back in the, in the summertime, we made an effort to really step up our enforcement of the parking regulations, and our ticket numbers were at a high for July, August, and September. And they've been steadily declining since then, not through a lack of enforcement, but I think that the education part of that, to the people who are committing these violations, we're seeing a reduction in the numbers now because there are less violations.
Oh, good, that's good.
Thank you, Officer Scory.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay.
I'll be in touch.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next one, four, appointments and committees. The Public Safety Building Reassessment Committee, three appointments.
I move that we appoint Robert Mitchell to the Public Safety Building.
Second.
Okay.
Why?
No, I was just thinking, I didn't know if Ed, I was gonna let Ed, just, he's kind of chairing that, I was gonna let him talk first, just in case he...
Can I actually just move to a mention of offer a sleep, including Mr. Mitchell?
Sure, folks, yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Plus, assuming we agree on this.
There were, in total, eight applicants for this committee, and this is community members at large, and they're all very strong resumes. I think in looking at it, speaking with Steve about it, and going through and looking at where there were some holes that we could maybe bulk up the team a little bit, it seemed like there were three candidates that maybe stood out a little bit more in that regard. The first being Robert Mitchell. Robert Mitchell has been very vocal about this, this, this project, and he offers, I think, a certain perspective and a viewpoint that is not necessarily consistent with those in support of it. And I think having that balanced, you know, that, that balance is important and appropriate, because we want to make sure that all sides are represented. Second name was Brian McCubrey. He has... Um, he has, he has, um, deep ties and deep roots within this, the community. Uh, he'd been involved, obviously, with the Savings Bank for a number of years. He brings a certain, um, financial literacy to, to this project, which I think is helpful because so much of the project focused on the financial implications of what we're doing. So, he stood out i- in that capacity. And I know that our, as a body, we keep talking about wanting to, um, encourage new people to become involved and, and, you know, fresh perspectives and, and, and new names to the table. And there was, um, this gentleman by the name of Mark, I believe it's Mochio. Um, he, uh, moved here, he, he has a young family, he moved here back in twenty seventeen. His letter of interest expressed, you know, his desire to become involved with the community, um, Wakefield community. I, I, I don't know him, but in reading, uh, about him, it seems that he has a, a background in engineering. He's very familiar with, with how the bid process works, so we have that element to it. But I think more significantly, um, he is someone that hasn't been involved in the past, who is a young family looking to become involved. And I like that balance of being able to have, have that as well. So, um, I would offer up those three names, um, on the slate with the caveat that any one of the people that applied would be excellent on this committee. And I hope that they are involved in various permanent building or whatever the case might be, because I think there's a lot of opportunities to utilize their, their, uh, their strengths.
Second for discussion?
Sure.
I, I like the names on your slate. I also really like some of the other names. And Ryan Mingo is someone who, um, is new to the town, wants to get involved.
Right.
Um, Tom Galvin brings a ton of experience to this table. I'm, I'm actually thinking he would be great on a future project. I think some of these.
Permanent Building Committee.
Permanent Building Committee on a future big project we're hoping to do at some point. So, I think, um, I like the wealth, wealth of knowledge here. I have no problem with this slate, but knowing that the folks that applied, we hit, we're not just moving your resumes aside, we are filing them and saying we're gonna reach out, um, for some other projects that we hope to have coming down the pike shortly.
And if we end up with subcommittees too, I mean, the, these folks would obviously be obvious choices. I mean, there are some really, really talented folks on here who have diverse backgrounds, which I think is, is, would be unique to the project.
Right, I agree, as well as even, uh, we didn't bring up Bob Vincent yet, but Bob Vincent obviously is, uh.
He would be fantastic too.
Right, so.
Absolutely.
The legal background, um, JAG, you know, so, um, again, it's nice to have tough choices because they're all very qualified. Um, any other comments or questions, or do you want to just move the slate? Yes, Amy.
Well, I'm just making a comment, I think they're all qualified.
Yeah.
Um, I'm a little disappointed that it was eight men. Um, so the positions will be filled by three men, whoever we choose. I think we have to really think about how we do recruiting and figure that out for in terms of, uh, gender diverse. You know, we all went to MMA this weekend, that conference, and the keynote speaker really talked about having different voices and diverse voices at the table and how you come up with better policy through that. And so, just to have a slate of eight men, um, I, we have to start doing things differently. And I don't know if that's targeted, I don't know if we reopen it to try to get some, uh, gender diversity. But, you know, it's a little, just, and I, I know, I know we all tried to recruit for this. Um, we can't always control, but what we're doing isn't working. And so, we have to really think about that, that eight members of the public, all of one gender, um, which is not what our town looks like, so.
I think too that, um, they were the applicants. We, we posted on Facebook, um, I think all of us, I, I can speak for myself, I was very aggressive on social media posting out. Uh, it was in the item, uh, it was, you know, trying to recruit any way possible. It, it, and that's who, that's who applied. I can't speak for the fact that it was eight men and no women applying for this. I do know that there are other opportunities within this same, there's an appointment for, uh, Wake Up, there's an appointment for Wave and some others. Um, there are more, more women involved with Wave, for example. So, I think it's more likely that there would be a, a woman appointed as their delegate, um, perhaps with Wake Up as well, I don't know. But, um, I, this was, this was posted publicly in eighteen different, you know, eighteen different forums. And who applies, applies ultimately. I do think to address y- your concern about gender diversity, which is one of, you know, many diversities we could look at, um, I think that some of that would be somewhat reconciled by the appointments of the Social Services folks.
Well, yes, which is what we discussed when we originally created it. But that, the eight applicants from the public who are wearing those public seats are all men. And I agree, we, we did recruiting, it didn't, it didn't work for the outcome that we would have wanted. And so, I'm just gonna encourage us as a board to think differently moving forward. You know, when you look at the makeup of our appointed positions, um, it's not equal. It's sixty percent male to forty percent women. Um, so, we, we need to work on that, it's something that we all have to work on and, and keep on doing outside of the box. I'm not, I'm not blaming you, I'm saying that we all as a body need to do better. And this is a, it's a pretty sad sign to have just eight men apply.
But Maureen, how can you force women to, I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to be a little.
We do targeted recruiting, we find women who are, you know, I mean, I think there's ways that you can do it. I'm not an HR executive.
Right, it's not forcing women, it's, it's.
It's, it's, it's opening it up, I mean.
I'm just a little confused why.
So, so ma- this is what we do in higher education all the time. You specifically, you would go to a specific group, you would go to the PTO moms and say, "Moms, we know that you are doing eighty times more than your husbands maybe typically, and you're working full-time." I'm speaking as a, a former PTO mom.
Sure, sure.
But, "Come on this committee, cause you'll be great." So, we, I think, I, I agree with Maureen saying, I also agree with Ed. Like, we did, I put it on Facebook, I talked it up, I tried to get some women and they just, um, didn't have, they felt they didn't have the time or weren't interested. But I think we can go into groups and say, "We really wanna, we wanted a female voice other than the eight men." That's what people are doing for hiring on all kinds of businesses for education.
Right.
You have to, you have to make more of a jump in.
I think we have to be mindful of the, too, the composition of, of this, uh, committee. Ultimately, uh, we have, uh, FinCom openings, there, there could be women there. Uh, we have, again, you know, Wave and Wake Up, um, uh, Board of Health would, would be a woman. So, I mean, there, I think ultimately, when it shakes out, it, it will be more gender diverse than, than this roster. But again, these are the folks that applied, so I don't know, that's, that's who applied. And, and I think we had, uh, a very solid, um, you know, group of folks that did apply. I think there's a lot of talented people here, so.
Okay, Tony.
Yeah, there, there was no, you know, women need not apply to this position, eight men applied.
We're not saying that, we're not saying that, Tony.
On the other hand, what happened if a woman applied who was not qualified?
I wouldn't appoint, but that's not the point.
I.
No, that's not the point.
You're giving the impression that we're not allowing women.
No, that's not what I'm saying at all. That's not, and that's not what ends.
And I can't believe we're having this discussion.
Oh, I can, I, I, we have it at faculty hiring every two months.
These are the, these are the people that applied.
Right. All we're saying is that the process to try to get more women to apply, maybe it's writing it so that there's different skill sets that are maybe kind of not traditionally just, you know.
Or just think about how we go deeper into the community to get women. No one's saying that we're not, um, that we're keeping women out. No, and Maureen absolutely wasn't saying that. But there, you know, eight men from the community, so let's think about how maybe we can get into different parts of the community.
It's a future issue that we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, just to, are we thinking of it?
This is.
But I also think we should be mindful that diversity does take on many different forms. And each of these three folks add a very different perspective to this committee. So, while gender is certainly one, you know, identifier, each of these folks offers a very different skill set and, and core competency. I have, you know, I, 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 I fully support, you know, there being, you know, a, a better gender balance. I have no issue with that, why would I? No one should. Um, if it was more women than men, I would have no issue with that. If it was more men than women, that, then that's how it's shaking out here. I don't know how ultimately it will shake out. I think we might have a few more men on here than women, um, just, you know, given how the numbers are, but I don't know. It might be, might be a close fifty, fifty, we'll have to see.
Okay, so it sounds like we'll keep that in mind for the next time. We have a motion. We have a motion, right, motion is amended. So, all in favor of the, um, candidates for appointment in committee for Public Safety Building Reassessment Committee, three appointments, Robert Mitchell, Brian McCubrey, and Mark Mochio? Did we decide how to pronounce that? Mochio. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
I just want to say I'm abstaining because my husband is one of the candidates.
Okay, so, six to one, being an abstention, okay, thanks Julie, I appreciate it, okay. Okay, next, oh, Julie's on a roll, Economic and Environmental Sustainability Committee. Julie, you want to just give a, kind of a brief review?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to be, I know we're, we're running.
No, no, but I mean, it's, it's important, you actually have done a lot of work on it, so I want you to.
Well, it's not just me, I, I've spent a lot of time also talking with Steve and, and kind of talking through the history of things like this. And just, um, I know that we here can't read it, but I wanted the general public to, to see what I was talking about rather than read it and take the time to read it out loud. So, I asked WCAT to put that up. So, essentially, I'm here to propose that we establish a standing sustainability, environmental sustainability committee. I have just seen in my discussions in the community, feedback from meetings I've been having, time I've been spending with the Department of Public Works and the Light Department as their liaison and going to regional meetings, that this, I believe, is a time that has come for Wakefield. Um, and I just want to briefly go through why I think that is. I mean, certainly whenever you ask anybody why they, um, move to Wakefield, what they think of when they come to Wakefield, it's certainly about the lake. And so, we're really very much grounded in this, the lake as, as a very high-profile sustainable asset. If I look back at what we have done over the last ten years or so, I looked through a lot of the studies, almost every one, very much because we have the lake, calls out environmental and sustainability, sustainability items, whether it's biking, walking, open spaces, um, you know, even kind of from the smart growth, compact development, just everything that really we speak to in Wakefield has some sort of a sustainability component, which is great. I think we're, we're already thinking along those lines. Um, there's a lot of citizen interest, um, there's many more state incentives and grants coming down the pike. We've seen a lot of incentives for renewable energy. We've had two businesses in the last year come to town privately to do composting. Um, so, I figure there's probably about a thousand pounds a week going out in private composting here in Wakefield. It's coming out of our municipal waste, waste stream. We've done, we've had the Department of Public Works take the lead on things like rain barrels. And we, when I looked around other cities, there's three hundred and fifty-one towns and cities in Massachusetts, and most of them have some sort of a town-level sustainability, energy, natural resources committee that is taking all of this, um, these, these trends into account. There are two hundred and forty towns in Wakefield that are designated as green communities and are getting grants on the order of two to five hundred thousand dollars to look at things like making their fleets more efficient, energy efficiency. There's a number of initiatives around recycling. There is a big emphasis on municipal vulner- vulnerability, preparedness, planning around climate change. And when I think of the things we talk about here on a bi-weekly basis, drainage, um, you know, pits, recycling, they all have to do with, um, some sort of environmental, um, they have some nexus with environmental issues. And so, um, I put this idea together for your consideration. I think that it is really building upon the things we're already doing here. I think, um, it is a committee that is not being, or a topic that is not being addressed right now in our existing committee structure. And I think just having a, a group at the table that can raise sustainability issues, ask the questions, be a resource to our town departments and committees, um, and, um, really spend a lot of time raising awareness in town, I think that the payback will be substantial. I, from, from getting grants, not leaving money on the table, to doing some community awareness raising. So, that is the concept behind what I'm proposing. If we look at the structure, I, I anticipate that it would be much like what we have with the Disabilities Commission or the Human Rights Commission. It would be, again, a subject matter expert or perspective, so that when anything happens in town, um, be it in the DPW or building new schools, um, um, looking at things like permeable pavement, when we're, we're maybe redoing the downtown, those kinds of things. Um, so I see it as really an advisory and a public awareness-raising type of activity, where whatever comes up, the committee or the town department can turn to the Sustainability Committee and say, "What do you think? Do you have any ideas?" Um, and equally, the sustainability can go to different entities and share kind of what's, what's creatively happening in other parts of the region, state, and even at a global level. So, that is my idea. We have it proposed here as a standing committee that would have a member of the town council, um, a member appointed by the school committee, and it doesn't necessarily have to be a school committee, um, elected school committee member, it could be somebody that they elect. Um, we've included somebody appointed by the Light Department, just because energy and energy efficiency is such a big issue, and four members of the public to be appointed by this town council. And I think, um, just going back to Jasmine who spoke here in public participation, and frankly, Caitlin Bracken who brought the, um, Plastic Bag Initiative forward a number of years ago, I think it's a great idea to maybe figure out a way to have a high school or a youth person on it, either as one of those four appointed positions or as a standalone. I can't tell you how many times over the last six months I've had students from the high school or, or going into college reach out to me to really kind of try to understand. I work professionally in environment and energy and want to see what's happening. And what a great way for them to get their feet wet at a young age. So, this is what I propose to you and I appreciate your consideration.
I think you did a great job, I think it's very sound. Any other comments, questions for Julie? She's been setting up this, Poe.
We, we exchanged, uh, text messages before the meeting, thank you for reaching out. I like the, uh, the fact that we are going to try to work in as much of, uh, our environmental concerns as possible. I mean, it's time that we do do that. I do like the fact that it's advisory capacity. Will the reports come back to us ultimately? So, if you're working with, say, the DPW, who's making the decisions? Is the DPW over something that would be far-reaching or would come back to, uh, the capacity of the council?
I mean, I, I guess we'd have to look at how other committees work. I mean, I don't, I, I really see us, the committee as being kind of advisory to the public works. I mean, and if there is something that really we can't resolve or, or needs attention, I assume all committees really come back to us. And some of this is just me being a novice, I mean, how, I don't see it much different than any of the other committees.
And, and that's why I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, uh, how, Steve, how would you perceive it?
Well, I think that, uh, and I've talked to, um, Councilor Smith Galvin a lot on this, it's viewing what we do with a, with, with a lens towards sustainability and what's best for the environment. So, let's say, years ago, um, the DPW decided, years and years ago, to go away from, uh, I don't even know what the term would be, to do, uh, better fertilizer around the lake, whatever, it doesn't, doesn't cause a problem with the lake. Ultimately, that came back to the Board of Selectmen, uh, at the time, because they had to vote on the budget to do that. So, ultimately, it does go back. So, if we're looking at capital planning and we're buying certain vehicles, there may be some input on that and that'll come back to this, uh, to the town council for approval. We're doing the recycling contract, maybe there's something in that. That would come back. So, it does, it's an advisory looking at something in another lens, it, it eventually would come back here for disposition, because everything gets approved by the town council, what is, on, on, when we do the budgeting. So, that's really where the rubber meets the road.
Thank you on that one. So, when you mentioned the impervious soil, uh, grounds, so, in that issue, I mean, you could probably extend it a little bit further and incorporate the planning board and the zoning board of appeal.
Absolutely.
Because they do address at some point what type of materials are used and to allow the water to go through, be retained. So, you have your sustainability in that fashion in, in respect. I would, uh, ask though, on item number four, that's going to tie in directly with the, um, potential executive, the envi- uh, the, sorry, the Economic Development Director's position. So, when, when through our discussions, that was one of the items, yes, you will be working hand-in-hand with that individual, but that would be one of their specific functions, because that's what you had mentioned once before.
E- exactly. What, I, I see this as, I think we all have a collective responsibility to improve environment, uh, economic development. And I think that this is just one component of it.
And, and I just, again, I just wanted to bring it up because you did mention that the, uh, Economic Development Director would be part, impossible to doing that. So, he would be another per- he or she could be potentially incorporated into the people that you talk to.
Well, and I would hope that when we do get to the point of hiring that kind of person, that we ask them sustainability questions. It's exactly the role. It's exactly the role I want this committee to play.
Very good, very good. And as far as the last question that you brought up, can't you make the school children liaisons to the committee? Because then you can put, I mean, you could use the term liaison. I wouldn't know. Because you already have seven. I'm not sure how you would want to do it in far as adding on memberships.
I think that's something similar to what the school committee does. I just think there can be a role there. And these may just be the appointed, and I think similar to what Ed was saying about the Public Safety Building, there can be subcommittees. You know, this is all going to evolve.
Those are all my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I've spoken with Julie about this offline as well. I think one of the things that I'm cognizant of is the sort of committee structure that we have currently. For example, we have the Advisory Board of Public Works, and we have the Conservation Commission. And I'm wondering about redundancies versus building up those resources, building up the bench of those that we already have in existence. You know, a lot, I would venture to say that a lot of the decision-making is going to be DPW-related. I think a lot of DPW choices will ultimately talk about sustainability. So my take from the Advisory Board of Public Works is that it had been less engaged with DPW and has now become a little bit more engaged in recent years. And maybe that's an unfair impression, but that's just what I've been, what I've been, seemed to glean from that. So I don't know if there's opportunity there to perhaps think about it more within the confines of that structure and how to kind of expand that within. You know, when we're talking about permeability of ground, we have, you know, Claire, our Stormwater, you know, Director, who is spot, I was at a meeting with her on Friday. She's spot-on talking about those issues, you know. So I'm a little bit concerned about the idea of a potential overstep. I know this talks about things like, you know, reviewing contracts and the like. And I think that an awareness campaign, an awareness initiative makes a lot of sense for any of the towns, you know. But the idea of having that kind of engagement with, you know, looking and, you know, offering the kind of input on contracts and like, I don't know. That just feels like Advisory Board of Public Works kind of already handles that. Conservation Commission, if it's not doing that, can or should be doing those sorts of things kind of on a town-wide basis. So that kind of gives me a little bit of pause. In addition to environmental sustainability, if the charge is to go out and make sure that we're more cognizant of that, I think we as a body have to first determine what it is, what our objectives are for the town with respect to environmental sustainability. Does that mean some sort of, you know, plastic reduction? I don't know. You know, I don't know what that means. Does that mean some sort of, you know, something that we can do at a local level that's quantifiable or some goal? If that's what you're looking to do with this? And I don't know that we as a body have ever had that kind of conversation. And there's a whole lot of mixed opinions on that. You know, some folks would love to see solar panels on every home. Other residents would prefer not to see any, you know, from an aesthetic standpoint, not even from an efficiency standpoint. So I think, when you're talking about lenses, Steve, I think that any of these decisions, especially when I'm thinking of DPW, any of these decisions are seen, are made, looking, should be made, looking through a number of different lenses. I think this is one of the lenses, but I don't know if this, if by making this a predominant lens, it's at the sacrifice of potentially some other lenses that are equally important to the calculus here. So I just, I don't know if we can build on what we currently have to achieve the same objective or try to encourage some sort of, you know, different structure to this. And I don't like the idea of school committee or gas and light appointing people that are then going to be on a committee that we've identified. I think that they can recommend to us, but I would like to see us making those sorts of appointments, just in general. But that was kind of my, you know, my takeaway. And Julie, I've spoken about this and, you know, thinking more about it. And I don't want to have redundancies, but we don't need to.
So I totally appreciate what you're saying, but I disagree to a certain extent because I've, seeing what the Conservation Committee is focused on, if there's some redundancy, I don't mind. I think this is such a new concept that we have not had. And I think it would allow this committee to look more globally within our town at everything that's happening. I don't think Conservation Committee can do this. I'm not convinced that the DPW Advisory Committee can handle this. My feeling, and we have Julie who's in the field, and she knows some other people in the field, this is something different. I love my environment. I'm not super focused on how to make it better because there you go. So I would defer to Julie and others who know better. I don't, I think if it doesn't work out, then we just disband it next year. I mean, it's, to me, no harm, no foul. I'm not convinced that those other two committees are going to do what I think this, what Julie is proposing this does. And I think it's, you know, climate change is already affecting so many different things so quickly. So why not give it a shot? I don't have a problem with it. I think it's great.
Tony?
Yeah, I'm with Ian. I totally support this because it does look at things through a different perspective. I do have some questions, though, on the appointment process, where I think we should have, you know, everybody be appointed by the town council. Or the town council, the Light Department, and the school committee are the, you know, one member from each or the chairs of each would be the appointment. So I just don't like the town council appointing someone without consent of, you know, another person. So my only concern is how that works. But again, everything else, you know, I do support. And again, if it doesn't work, we disband it.
Exactly. I think anything that doesn't prove out. And just to, I definitely appreciate what you're saying. I went through all the committees. We have about thirty-two committee, standing committees in Wakefield. It's a lot. But when I go through them, I feel like we have, you know, four committees that have arts lenses, and we have a health lens, and planning lenses, and infrastructure lenses, and kind of inclusivity lenses, education and recreation. And I just, I really feel like there's a hole when we look across the whole, kind of, global committee structure with what we have. And so I would just ask, like any committee, this committee will have to prove itself. So that's my response to that. Just to Tony and to others, and to you who had a question about the appointments, I am completely open to that. I think Steve and I had talked about it. It might just be easier to kind of have the school, but I'm okay if they recommend, and then we make the final decision. Or we just say, look, we're looking for a structure that has energy experience interest, school experience interest. We can, I'm absolutely open to that.
Is there a reason there's not a DPW member sitting on it?
No, we can certainly add that.
Only because if they're the person that would ultimately be doing a lot of this, to have them at the table?
And, 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 right.
Claire would be.
Claire is great. And I definitely think, I had did some thinking, you know, would we, I understand that contracts can be a hot-button word in this. We can say initiatives. We want to look at initiatives. I know, certainly, this committee does not want to be involved in contract negotiations. We'd like to know that they're going on and offer some insight. But, you know, whether that, our relationship, this Environmental Sustainability Committee's relationship is with the Advisory Board of Public Works or directly with a representative from the DPW, that we can discuss certainly.
And I just want to add to look at past things. I hope this committee actually looks way beyond just DPW because I think when you look at a whole town, so the Plastic Bag being a good example, it was introduced by a high school student. We formed an improv, a short-term committee that met two or three times about that and then came up with a policy that went to town meeting. But I think that process really made sense. And so you have a committee who thinks about something throughout the whole town. That's not just DPW. That isn't actually just for DPW. It's across the whole town. And knowing friends that do this in other communities, there's such grant potential, and not just for DPW. There are grants that go to the town, and finding someone to work on some of these initiatives. You know, Melrose got money from a statewide grant. I mean, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars out there, but Melrose got money to, like, commuting members to make recyclable bags. I mean, that would be great for us to get something like that, right? And that's not Rick Stinson who's going to be sewing stuff. That's beyond. And so I think having some, a group that looks beyond DPW and actually looks with a broader lens is actually really beneficial for all of us, all members of the community.
Like having a DPW member. That's what I.
Agreed. No, no, no. I agree. I was, I was just addressing the, could DPW or the Conservation Commission do this? I think it's a larger lens.
Yeah, so I'm open to making modifications on the actual makeup.
Yeah. I think is some of the, like, I got tripped up on was number two, engage with town departments and committees, commissions on existing or proposed contracts, policies, and programs. I don't know of other committees, nothing comes to mind, that engage with departments in that way. And maybe I'm just at a loss for examples of that. But I was trying to think of other, and it, as much as I appreciate what you're saying about the lens, and if there is a committee need here, I think that's one thing. I think the function of the committee, for me, I don't think it has kind of separate standing from a lot of the other work that the committees do because those are all the other lenses, you know. That we have veterans, you know, perspectives. We have, you know, seniors' perspectives. There's a lot of other perspectives here, so it just feels like we're kind of giving this special standing, which I don't know that that's really the appropriate thing to do. If we create the committee, that's great. If we do number two, where it says engage with town departments and committees, commissions on existing or proposed initiatives, I think that's, to your point, is better.
And it captures what you want.
Yeah. I think a limiting number four makes sense because it's not a business component to it. And I frankly think, you know, number, from what you're saying, obviously identifying, you know, grants and programs, that number three makes sense. Like, that's the kind of thing. I just don't want to have a situation where we have a committee that is usurping some of the decision-making of the functioning of day-to-day town department government. And that's where, I don't want to have the rub there, you know, where it's, we have to clear this by, you know, the Environmental Committee to make sure it's okay. Get the perspective of, but ultimately, you know, there's, you know, someone, DPW, someone in the Police Department has, is balancing a number of interests. Environmental or efficiency is one of them, but there are a number of other interests that, you know, that the police chief is having to take into account. So I just don't want to make it seem like this has special standing compared with the other committees because they have equal interests, you know, and equal priority, I think, in a lot of respects. And I would like, I think the committee members being appointed by us makes sense as well.
Want me to do two?
I'm taking some notes there. So on number two, engage with town departments and committees on existing proposed initiatives.
Yep.
Period.
Period.
Right.
Removing contracts, policies, or programs.
Yeah, right.
Remove number four completely. And on the appointment, add one member of the DPW.
Yep.
And all to be appointed by the town council.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, they can give us recommendations.
Well, I think you can always add liaisons.
Addenda, okay.
What was the thinking behind this, the school committee person, just out of curiosity?
Well, Steve and I were talking. We thought, I think, given that the large infrastructure issues that are coming up there, and, you know, and frankly, that's a lot of.
As simple as recycling.
Exactly.
They're miserable on recycling. Sorry, school committee. But they are miserable on recycling.
You can focus on the parking lot behind the high school.
No, no, but that's not recycling. But that's something that maybe should be looked at better. In fact, I have students reaching out to me about what I can do to help them with the recycling, so.
Okay. So.
Sorry, school department. Call a spade a spade.
Do you want to tweak anything else on this?
No, I'm fine with those.
Are we ready for a motion with Steve's amendments to accept the proposed Environmental Sustainability Committee?
I think so.
So I move that we adopt the proposed Environmental Sustainability Committee, proposed by Julie Smith Galvin with the amendments noted by Steve.
Second.
All in favor? I oppose, hearing none.
Good job.
Julie, thank you very much.
Excellent job, Julie. Excellent job.
A lot of time. Okay.
The teams in the third are period, so it's more.
Okay, so without further ado, license, permits.
Say on A and B on license and permits, those are a few more of those renewals that came trickling in. And what happens on these is that these businesses send them in late. And that's what happens. So that's why those are coming to you now. They've all gone through the process.
Yes.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the 2019 Class II license for Brandon Auto Sales.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, hearing none. Thank you, Paul.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, for Carmen Victor's license for Dino's Brick Oven Pizzeria and Mel Dobbs Inc. as a slate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, hearing none.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, for a one-day liquor license. Mr. Mullins, should I do these individually or can they be a slate?
Why don't you do it individually?
I'll make a motion to grant a one-day liquor license to the committee to elect Philip Corsi.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, I'll have to step in on the next one.
I'll make a motion for a one-day liquor license to the committee to reelect Peter May.
Second.
All those in favor?
Can I just, I have, it's just the date's not filled in on the form.
Oh, yeah. Mine's February fifth. I'm not sure when Phil's is.
No, no, just on yours. I just want to make sure it's complete before we.
Okay. Yes, so February fifth.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
One abstention.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion for a one-day liquor license for the Melrose Wakefield Healthcare.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, hearing none.
I'm abstaining. I serve on the Melrose Wakefield Healthcare Board of Trustees as an uncompensated member, so, but I'm abstaining.
Six to one with one abstention due to the potential conflict. Okay.
Lastly, sir, one-day liquor license to be issued to Dan McGrath.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, hearing none. Thank you very much. Okay, next, six, approval of minutes, regular board minutes, possible vote to approve the January fourteenth, 2019, regular board minutes. Do I have a motion?
I motion we approve the regular board minutes from January fourteenth, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Next, warrant review and signing. Warrants number twenty-sixth dated December twenty-fifth, 2018 through warrant number twenty-nine dated January fifteenth, 2019. Julie, anything?
Nothing of.
Have any interest?
Nothing that comes to mind.
All important, but not of any extra interest. Okay, thank you very much. Let's see. Okay, so next, board meeting is February eleventh, 2019, at seven PM at WCAT Studio. Matters not anticipated by chairperson within forty-eight hours of meeting. So why don't we start with Maureen, because Julie's worn out now, so she's gonna crash.
So a couple of things. First, I'm going to ask for next, at our next meeting, that WAVE and their White Ribbon Month get on the agenda. I believe members of WAVE and the police chief are going to come ahead of us, so if we could get on the agenda, it'd be appreciated. I just want to do a little congratulations. We have a cultural council as we talk about committees in town, and they award eight thousand dollars roughly a year. And they awarded, just this past week, eight thousand dollars worth of grants to promote culture in Wakefield. And so stay tuned. They are issuing a press release, and there's some cool activities on that list. So be on the lookout, and thank you for all the members who have volunteered their time to read all the grant proposals. Hoping Steve, when you go around, Steve talks a little bit about the proposals, that he, the problem-solving that he did about the shutdown and just how him and his team worked on that. So I'm going to let him talk about that. And then we talked a little bit about here about this conference that we all attended last weekend. It was a great conference, thousands of people, town councillors and city councillors from all over the state. I don't know. Hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to talk about some of the panels we went on and what we learned. I went to a really interesting panel on opioids and then about downtown and how to revitalize downtown. And so I hope we have an opportunity to talk about some of the stuff we learned and some of the stuff that we're going to hopefully keep on talking about.
Okay.
And I think that's it.
Is that it? Thank you, Maureen. Paul?
Well, Mr. Chair, I was going to speak on one of the issues that was just brought up, but I think I'm going to also wait until we have an opportune time to really focus on it. We had a great time at the MMA convention, learning a lot of new things. There were a lot of great workshops that weekend. I know each of us went to maybe one or two of them. I too went to the same one in regards to the downtown, which has a lot of great ideas on how to revitalize, rejuvenate, and bring some great focus on not only just the downtown, but the entire community. So I look forward to bringing that up at one of our future meetings.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Let's go to Julie. Yeah. You okay now?
Yeah. So.
So, let's see. I attended, I guess since the last meeting, I with some of my colleagues here, we did went to the State of the Schools address that was held by the superintendent. Interesting, it is clear to me that the issue of the high school is going to be one that keeps coming up. And I guess I would just ask our chair, I think we're probably going to have to have some joint meetings with the school committee and really, I think the Town Council's probably going to have to take a lead on some of this. And part of that I'd like to understand is when the MSBA, the state grant is going forward, are we going to have a chance to look at it? Just because I think we're all going to want to be able to really speak on what's in there and what our vision is for the schools. Saying on the school theme, I guess, the Wakefield High School Senior Night is doing some fundraising for their after-prom program that was hugely successful last year, so if anybody's interested in that, they should look that up. February sixth, town appointments for the appointments that are up in April. And I think we had a lively discussion about what kind of, you know, we want to diverse people here and so please, everybody take a look at those. And there's some really interesting positions that are up. And then, thank you all again for the Sustainability Committee. I think we're going to do great things. And Wednesday night there, or Thursday night, rather, no, Wednesday night, there is a sustainability legislative update that Senator Lewis and Representative Broder are hosting in Melrose that a number of people will be going to. I think that is, oh, I wanted to send good wishes out to Tom Stapleton, who's the executive director here at WCAT. He's having some minor back surgery. He's going to be out for a few weeks, but we definitely missed him tonight.
Thank you, Julie.
Got a few things. This past weekend was a pretty busy weekend in town. Those of us who attended the Wakefield Independence Day Committees Indoor Barbecue, were treated to some great barbecue and some great fundraising. I think that parade is on July fourth. I think the schedule is. So that, and that was a great cause.
You haven't approved that yet.
Concurrent with that was the Wakefield Educational Foundation, their trivia night, they had a great fundraiser, a fantastic bartender from what I hear. And they, and they raised some great money for that as well. This past week, we also, on the downtown theme, we also had some great focus group sessions. And it brought together a number of different stakeholders across the town, both within town government and outside of town government. And it was a really good opportunity to hear a lot of different perspectives on where opportunities exist for, you know, this redevelopment. So it's a really, really exciting initiative and project and I'm excited to see it moving forward. And finally, I just wanted to mention that I was, I went running yesterday afternoon midday and I thought of you, Peter, because I ran by the dog park and it was absolutely packed with people. Absolutely packed. And so again, I just, I tip my hat to you on that. Thank you for that because it was, it was very cool to see so much energy, you know, in that location and the dogs were all playing nicely too, which is always a plus, so, thank you.
Okay, Ian.
I also want to, was with Ed at the meeting for the downtown revitalization. And it's the first time in several years that when we're talking about revitalizing downtown that you could actually see plans put into place. And I think we are so close to executing some big changes. Strike that. Not executing. We will go to the public. We will talk to the public. We will put these changes before them and get the public's input. But I think some changes are coming, which might be, you know, I hope people have open minds for some of what we're thinking of doing because I think it will make downtown so much more welcoming. I want to congratulate Maureen Butt for being a phenomenal speaker at the Women's March, being asked to speak, which is a huge kudos for our Town Council, I believe. A nine-minute speech to thousands of women, so thumbs up on that. I also attended the MMA and I went to, we'll have a chance, like you said, to talk about this, but an Aging in Place forum that was really interesting that in didn't, in looked at different ways that we can keep our aging population in Wakefield, some creative ways to do it, thinking about building. I think some folks that push back against some of the building we're doing, the reason why we support some of that building is because it allows aging in place. So that was, that was exciting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ian. Tony.
So one of the things that I sat through at the MMA conference was the one that Steve chaired, which was on social media. And it was, the woman who was presenting was excellent and she talked about how if you post something about a missing dog, you'll have more hits than if you post something about a missing child.
If you shoot a police dog, you get more.
But also out there, we had the opportunity to meet with some of the Town Councils. Myself met with Jack McCarthy with the School Building Assistance, the School Building Authority. And they do offer assistance for not only new schools, but they offer assistance for remodels as well. So it's something that we will definitely explore when we, you know, get together with the town and some of the other boards of the town. You know, if we cannot, you know, do a complete remodel or, excuse me, a complete rebuild, then we will look at a remodel. Did speak with some of the officials with Belmonts and they're getting a new seven through twelve at a price tag of about three hundred million dollars that will affect their property tax bills at about eight hundred, eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred.
Yes, eighteen hundred per household, so something to look into.
Well, and to avoid.
And to avoid, exactly. But we will, we'll do something, but we have to do something responsible.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Tom? Nothing. Steve?
Very, very quickly, Maureen did touch on this and I do want to thank everyone for reaching out on the federal shutdown. That was a little close at home. No one was happier than me that, for many reasons, that those are going to be done. But in any event, what struck me is that we do have a number of programs where we do already help people. And we made that more, more available or promoted it more is that, so I think the key is that if you are behind in your water and sewer bill or your gas and light payment, don't wait to go into arrears. We have these programs in place now to work with you, to come up with payment plans. And don't wait till it goes down, it goes to demand and then you've got interest added on this and all those things. We don't want to do that. We want to make things work for you. And the gas and light has the same exact programs available. Veteran Services, I was very impressed with what a veteran services officer did. They actually were able to get people that were in the military, Coast Guard families, one fifteen benefits, which really was a little bit tricky for them to go through, but they went through, they got the state to recognize this and that would help a couple of our families in town that are active in the Coast Guard. And finally, the food pantry and I got to tell you that there are so many families that take advantage of this now, but, and it's so easy to donate. I went online the other day and donated. It didn't take, it didn't take half a minute to donate. And for every dollar that you donate to the food pantry, they can turn that into four dollars. What a multiplier. So I think it's great when you're going out and you buy a bag of groceries at Shaws or what have you and give it to them, but even easier for you and actually better for the food pantry is to do that. So the other thing is that come and reach out to us. We're here to work with you and help you. You know, we had our tax collector in tonight that collects ninety-nine point nine percent of the taxes. That's not, you know, that's by design. That's working with people to making sure we can do that. You know, there are times that things happen and things go to deferral or what have you, they go a little later on, but we try to work with all of our citizens to make that, to make that all work out better for you. So please, please take advantage of that. I enjoyed the MMA a lot. Thank you for all of you giving up your time to do that. I think that we get a lot out of that. State budget is coming through. That's about what I thought it was going to be at this point. It's never quite enough, so we'll work on that, but we're plowing through, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. So just to reiterate, you know, to the public that the schools are always critical for us at the Town Council level and none more important than probably this coming year, which I think we all hope to get approval. And I think that for whatever matching funds we get, whether it's repairs or a new high school, there's a lot going on and as Julie mentioned, we really want to make sure we're, I think we all agree, we all want to make sure we're more involved than ever. And it's just so important to keep our seniors here and not be throwing them out of town because we're raising property taxes too much. But at the same time, we need to take care of the kids that are here since it's one of the biggest things we have going for us when we have great schools. People come here because of the schools. So just, we're keeping that in mind and I think it's just important the town knows that. It's a critical item for 2019. So with that, that's it for me. I think it was a.
That moves away, John.
All in favor, Germent?
Aye.
That was the fastest ever, Ian.
Wow.
Seven zero. Thank you very much.